Okay, Madam Clerk. Good evening, West Orange and our favorite guest here tonight. Welcome to our first council meeting of the fall season of 2019. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino-
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac-
Present.
Councilwoman Toob Brown-
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney-
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to my council colleagues and everything else. First up on tonight's agenda is a presentation by the Alzheimer's Association, and we're pleased tonight to have representatives. We have Ms. Robin Cohn, Director of Programs and Services; Mr. Randy Lerner, Manager, Marketing and Communications. Would you like to come up, folks, and make your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you.
And please speak into the microphones.
Absolutely. We'll be brief.
Thank you.
I want to thank the council, and especially everyone in the town of West Orange for not only inviting us back here this evening for your proclamation, but also having us at the South Mountain Recreational Complex this coming Saturday again. Last year was our inaugural year at that location, and it was a spectacular event, and we're expecting the same again this year. To put it into perspective as to why this is so important, Alzheimer's is truly a public health crisis. Currently, there are 5.8 million Americans living with the disease, and that's projected to increase to nearly 15 million by the year 2050. Here in the state of New Jersey, there are currently approximately 200,000 people living with the disease, and 453,000 caregivers who care for these patients, many of which are unpaid. Obviously, it's a financial burden. It truly is a public health crisis. So it's events like this, as I was mentioning earlier, this is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, yet it's the only disease in the top 10, that there is no cure and there is no treatment. So, which is why we're on such an urgent mission to raise the funds, to develop treatments, to ultimately work towards a cure. And that's what motivates us to do what we do, and we thank you and your community for partnering with us in that effort. I do want to introduce Robin Cohn as the stated Director of Programs and Services.
Thank you, Randy. And council, thank you very much for having the Alzheimer's Association here tonight. As Director of Programs and Services, please know that we have a major impact on our families and our caregivers throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as, of course, throughout the county of Essex. We work with our families every single day to help them to find the resources, the information, the education, and the services that they need to be able to go on with their lives. This is a public health crisis. We have a helpline that is answered 24 hours a day, seven days a week, always by a dementia care specialist. No one should not have the information that they need at the time that they need it. And that helpline is a very busy one for the state of New Jersey, and I talk to families day and night about the needs that they have, whether it be finding healthcare providers, finding assisted living facilities, or just finding someone to talk to. We deal with such issues as not only finding resources and services, but abuse. And please know, there are many people in our state and in our county who do not even know where to go for safety services. They wander, they're lost, and they need to be found. We have the services at the Alzheimer's Association to offer to them. We have a program, a medical art safe return program, and please know that over 70% of individuals with dementia across the entire spectrum may wander. And we must do something within certainly West Orange, as well as the county of Essex and our state of New Jersey, to be sure that those safety services are provided. And certainly, I would welcome the opportunity to work with West Orange and provide programs and services, and talk with you more about our helpline, safety services, the education programs that we deliver across all communities of care. I thank you for caring about our families. We fight Alzheimer's every single day, and if we could just make their lives just a little bit better, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Just give me a second, Councilwoman. Robin, just have a question for you. Do you ever come out to our senior citizen complexes, particularly our Rent-a-House, our Degnan House, and talk to our residents there?
Not in West Orange, but I welcome the opportunity.
Okay. We'd like that, and I'm sure our council colleagues, Councilwoman Toob Brown, Councilwoman Castellino, Councilwoman McCartney, who are very into our programs, and Councilman Kukoviac, we'd like to see you come into our community and talk to our residents, particularly our senior residents-
Yes.
-who really, really need it, but they sometimes don't know where to get it, or they're too-
Exactly.
-embarrassed to. They just feel like they don't want to ask for it, so...
And we find that throughout all communities. We go to public housing groups, we speak to senior centers and communities all over the state. We welcome the opportunity to bring our expertise to West Orange. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you, Randy. Good to see you again this year, and Robin, thank you-
Thank you very much.
...for leading the charge this evening.
Thank you.
I wanted you to provide contact information or a telephone number for residents-
Absolutely. Our helpline is 800-272-3900, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, always answered by a dementia care specialist, and also important to know, we can speak in over 200 languages.
Well, actually, I did leave each of you a magnet-
Thank you.
...that has that number. If you have some extras, we'll leave it on the table. It's really good.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Randy, what type of marketing do you do to try to outreach or let people be aware of your organization and the services that you do offer?
A lot of earned media. Star Ledger, we do have contracts with the local caps, cap of West Orange, police, and others around the state. We're heavy on social media, Facebook, as well as Twitter. We understand that a lot of the people that we're trying to reach are older, but we're hoping to reach the adult children through social media as well. So we did place a lot of stories in the local media, trying to personalize it with, in June. Poor families might be going through, but it's across the board, as well as tradition, what more than what happened.
Okay. That's great. Councilwoman?
Randy, so you know we're raising funds in hope on Saturday with this race. Can you talk a little bit more about that, the time, and I know it's at the pavilion. Speak into the mic. Come around, speak into the mic.
The event, actually, registration begins at 8:30. For those, many people have already registered online, and you can do that at ALZ.org/NJWALK. However, you can still register the day of.
Yep, that's what I'm telling you.
Registration starts at 8:30 in the morning. The ceremony itself starts at 9:30, and the walk kicks off at 10:00, and that typically will go till about 11:00, 11:30. There'll be a number of informational booths. Obviously, Robin will be there, counseling and offering information about services that we provide. There'll be other corporate sponsors there that support us in the senior healthcare arena and other local businesses. It'll be a fun day. I know it's going to be nice weather, and Councilwoman, I understand you'll be speaking as well at the opening ceremonies. We look forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My one last question is that, do you deal a lot today with Essex County and Morris County? Do you have a connection with the county organization and the county government?
We take advantage of every opportunity that we have throughout the 14 counties that we represent that makes up the greater New Jersey region. So any opportunity that could be provided to us, we will certainly make sure that those services and resources are brought to each county government. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Robin, on that note, we have the Public Information Officer for the county there-
Yes.
And make sure you give him information.
He's always, he just got done with Wellness Day, so he's really sitting in a bag. But thank you both for coming. Thank you for the great work you do for the residents, not only our community, but of the state and your area, and it's really important. But please always feel free to come back or reach out to any one of us, and we're always here to help. Plus, you know, our township employees are always there and ready. So thank you very much, and-
Thank you very much.
-good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to the signal of your on Saturday.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. We appreciate that. Okay. Next up on our agenda is update on redevelopment. Mr. Sarris, Mr. Gross, would you like to comment, please?
Sure. As of today, there are 189 applications, 174 moved in, and the other ones are being reviewed and ready for approval. The Phase 2 is going on the planning board. I think the planning board meeting is next week. So they're Phase 2.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, I am. The Phase 2 is going before the planning board on next Tuesday, or Wednesday, I'm sorry, next Wednesday, so they're moving along.
Okay. Any updates on retail?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Unfortunately.
What's going on with CVS? I know that's in our development area. I'm hearing things. Is the owner being, you know, acceptable to any tenants, or what's he really looking for, or...
What do you mean? The CVS is, you talking about next to the CVS?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not so sure where they're at with that, but I haven't spoken to them, to be honest with you, recently, but I can double-check on that, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone, have anyone, any of my colleagues have any questions for the administration?
No, but the planning board will meet October 2 at 7:30 here in Chamber, Council Chambers, and to discuss Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along, let's go to council liaison announcements. Councilman Kukoviac?
I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Castellino.
Councilwoman?
About the big book sale at the library, not this coming weekend, but the next weekend.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Friday and Saturday during the day.
Councilwoman?
Hey, big book sale in-
I've heard.
...a week from this weekend, on October 5 and 6, from 10 to 4 on Saturday and 1 to 4 on Sunday. If you're a friend of the West Orange Public Library, which is not too late to sign up, you go to the website, you can join us Friday night on October 4 for a wine and cheese party, and it's a preview to the book sale. So come on down. I was at the farmer's market this past weekend, passing out some bookmarks for reminders, and it was exciting to hear that a lot of folks already know about the book sale and looking forward to it. So a lot of great books, different genres, multiple children's selections. So we look forward to seeing you on October 4 to the 6. Also, I guess I'll continue on my liaison announcements, or Councilman did-
This is council, this is council liaison-
Yeah, that's my figure.
He gave it to you.
He gave it to me. Okay. I'll keep rolling then.
Now, do you want it back after she finishes?
No, no, I apologize. I just wasn't, didn't have the details.
That's okay.
That's okay.
I didn't apologize.
But both Councilman Kukoviac and myself are both on the board, so, and we appreciate all the work from all the members working really hard to put this together. Not an easy task to, you know, get all the donations in and sort them and get them on the bookshelf. So again, please come down and support. Degnan House liaison report is the roof, work on the roof has begun. The entire roof will be getting replaced, so that should be done within the next couple weeks. So I know the residents are looking forward to that. PR Commission, we are rolling right along. Thank you to Joe Fagan, who has been assigned to the commission. He has been very helpful. We're working on West Orange Resource Guide, and I could give you a sneak preview of our cover. He has done lovely work on our back cover, so we're finalizing the content, and it's all about the township. So we're going to hopefully be excited to release this by the end of the year. So thank you, Joe, for working so hard on it, and the commissioners as well for getting content for you. And another liaison meeting I had was with our school board colleagues and the superintendent. I met with them last week, and multiple, it was a great meeting, multiple topics discussed. We, Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Cason is going to be meeting with our senior services program coordinator, Laura Van Dyke, and also Dorothy Saunders, and they'll be working on some intergenerational programs with the students. We have multiple programs, but they're going to collaborate on some other ideas, so we're looking forward to that. And just a lot of great ideas were discussed as far as Washington Street School. We discussed the school board will be repairing the wall, so if you noticed, there's been some wall damage on the Washington, not the Washington Avenue, it's at the Franklin Avenue wall. So they'll be looking to take care of that, and we're keeping an eye on some of the bus stops in case they need an ordinance for parking. Sometimes there's some spots where the buses turn, and they may need us to implement some parking ordinances in the morning. So they'll be in touch with Mr. Lepore. So good discussions, and we look forward to a good school year. In regards to senior services, a few events coming up. Actually, tomorrow, West Orange, we'd like to thank our police officer, West Orange Senior Safety Summit is tomorrow from 10 to 12, and that is, will be held at 10 Gaston Street, right here at the Rent-a-House. So we look forward to our residents to pop in there, and our police department will be presenting. And on Sunday, October 6, our fire department, our Emergency Managed Operations Center at 25 Mount Pleasant Avenue, they'll be holding CPR certified course for all those. It's a free course for all those who like to get certified in CPR. So again, a lot of great events coming up, and please look to the senior citizen website. And right, they redesigned it where any, the front page will be able to click on and get all our senior events, so it's very user-friendly. And there will be a Oktoberfest trip on, I'm sorry, my printer didn't print out right. That's why I'm stumbling through here. It didn't print out the information with what I thought I had the information on. But on October, just look to the website, there'll be a senior trip mid-October. So I will defer now to my council colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Toob Brown?
Thank you. Don't have any municipal alliance liaisons at this time, but I did want to recognize a couple of our organizations that recently met. Our West Orange African Heritage Organization held a forum at the high school that was very well-attended, and I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Dorothy Saunders. She's a pretty-
Mrs. Gray?
Yes, she's a great addition to the department. I was very excited to meet her. The conversations were focused on being stopped by police and what your actions are or responses are there, too, as well as breast cancer awareness, with a focus also on male breast cancer, because we don't discuss this. It's always typically, you know, centered around email health issues. But we had a resident who was a survivor, and he was quite moving and sharing his story, so I was very excited about that. The West Orange Hispanic Foundation gave a great performance celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month that's presently going on at the library. Great thanks to all of those who organized that. And also, I wanted to give Stacy Reese a shout-out for sustaining chills at the farmer's market when she was dunked several times, and I was thrilled. I got to dunk her on my second try, so that was a lot of fun. And also, just wanted to make note that there is a meeting going on. I'm hosting a forum tomorrow at the West Orange High School Cafeteria, Tarnoff Cafeteria. It's a town hall discussion regarding the change in the ordinance with respect to the Jake Honig legislation, the Compassionate Use Act, where we will be discussing and just giving out information with respect to what that means to our township. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
I want to echo the accolades up for Stacy Reese, too, because she has just transformed the farmer's market into an actual event each Saturday morning. It's wonderful. I would invite everyone to visit westorangearts.org to look at the tremendous amount of events and exhibitions that they have scheduled coming up. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce, the same thing. Please visit westorangechamberofcommerce.com to get information about businesses in town, about social networking events that are coming up, quite a few events there as well. We, the West Orange Environmental Commission meets tomorrow night in the conference room. We meet the every, the last Wednesday of every month, open to the public. Everyone's invited. The planning board, we just said, is October 2. The next meeting, we will be discussing the Phase 2 of the redevelopment project on Lakeside and Ashland Avenue. And as you just heard from the Alzheimer's Association, the race on Saturday at 9:28 starts at 9:28. Go home, shower, come back. To the Glenmont Garden Party, Friends of Thomas Edison National St. Park, hosting Glenmont Garden Party at 4 o'clock at the home of Glenmont in Llewellyn Park. It's cocktail reception. We have our signature electrics, I don't know where it's coming from, our signature electric spark cocktail provided by the Poorhouse on Main Street. We have our food coming in from Nicholas Anthony's. Someone's phoned too close.
Mm-hmm.
Food is coming in from the, the Wilshire Grand Caterers, and from Nicholas Anthony's Family Kitchen, and desserts from the manor. Everyone's invited. Please visit friendsofedison.org for a ticket and more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, Councilman Kukoviac?
I just defer.
No, I just, I mean, anything, okay. Thank you, Councilman. Okay. This past Sunday, of course, congra-
Okay.
Oh, you were, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just-
No, go ahead.
Sunday, you mentioned the, well, we had the Nikhil Badlani Foundation race last weekend, and this Sunday, Downtown Alliance was the ovarian cancer, and again, accolades to Megan Brill and her team, just finish with that Downtown Alliance, which did an outstanding job coordinating that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. My turn. Okay. Just want to pick up where Councilwoman McCartney left this past Sunday. Of course, we had our annual Mayor's 5K Run for the Cure for national ovarian cancer. This year, we had over 800 runners, probably the same that we had last year, and we raised over $80,000 for the cure. And a real shout-out to the Downtown Alliance, who sponsors it, to our executive director, Megan Brill, but I also want to do a big shout-out to our West Orange, your civilian emergency response team for being there with their hot-weather misters, to our West Orange Police Department, members of the Department of Public Works, and Edwin, and from the Recreation Department, and to thank all my council colleagues who were able to attend, to the mayor, to Assemblyman John McCain, and to our governor, Richard Cody, for being there. It was a great turnout, a lot of runners, a lot of excitement, and good way to start off the season with a good run for the cure. Also, again, congratulations on Saturday, first of all, to the farmer's market with a great carnival event. It was really, really great. The Dunk Tank, the mayor got himself dunked, as usual, and Dr. Paul Banks, one of our local dentists. Also, on Saturday, we had the Hispanic Foundation International Latino Day with flag raisings for all the South American, Central American countries. Nice turnout, good event. It's something that, you know, they're going to do again. It was really enjoyable, and a real shout-out to our deputy mayor, so, for his efforts and the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. So that was really, really good. Just let you know that West Orange is now an official member of the state's Street Smart program, so you'll be seeing a lot of things coming out from us on Street Smarts. You'll see a lot of signs going up on major roadways, talking about Street Smart, heads up, don't look down, don't text. Those are all coming around. We have all new handouts, paperwork, and they're becoming a part of our pedestrian safety advisory board, and it'll be a real impact for our Street Smart Complete Streets program. Also, too, you know, the rehab eventually will be coming very shortly for Woodland Avenue off of Pleasant Valley Way to traffic light, which is over 40 years old, and the county is working on to put a new traffic light in with additional signals, and we thank the county and the engineering department for working on that, and of course, the Mr. Lepore, and of course, to the county executive. Also, we're being invited, and I have to talk to Councilwoman McCartney about this, but Livingston's inviting us to their ad hoc recycling meeting, because they're getting ready to do their ordinance, but they want to partner with other towns, particularly West Orange, because they figure the more the merrier, and the ordinance should be alike. So instead of doing an ordinance and having to redo it like some of our neighboring towns have done, so I will give you all the details once I get to specifics, Councilwoman. The next pedestrian safety advisory board meeting is going to be moved. It's not going to be on the 16th, it'll be on the 17th, October 17, at the Educational Center at Turtle Bag Zoo, and we thank the county for the use of that at 7:30. Also, want to do another call-out is that our next council meeting, October 7, will not be on a Tuesday night, it will be on a Monday night. So please make a note to that, that our October meeting, our first meeting in October, will be on a Monday, October 7. So that was a change that the council made because of the holidays. Also, just want to say something, and I just want to, you know, do a shout-out. You know, we as residents, you know, sometimes we take for granted our public employees, our municipal employees, and I'm not just talking about our public works, I'm not just talking, but you know what? When you see our firemen, when you see our policemen, go up and say hello to them. Just acknowledge that they're there, because they really, really are important to us, and yeah, I know they get paid to do their work, but I know they would feel very, very much pleased if a resident would go up there and say, "Hi, how are you? How you doing? And thank you for the great work you do for the township of West Orange." So I believe it would make a big difference to them. It would make them feel really good, because even though people do get paid, sometimes you like to be thanked, especially by the people you serve. So I just wanted to call that out and let you be aware of that, and make them feel good. You know, it really makes a difference. Hopefully, at the next council meeting, we'll have our presentation for our Road Diet. I know it's complete, but it has to come here to be seen by the council. When the council approves, it will go out to the merchants, the vendors, and the residents along the Main Street corridor. And we also thank the county for supporting our program. We'll be one of the first in the area to have a Road Diet, something that actually, if you don't know about the Road Diet, if you go to the West Orange website and look at the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board set, you'll see it says Road Diet Complete Streets. Click on it, and it'll take you through a 30-minute presentation of what a Road Diet really does. And it actually does what it does. It slows down the traffic. It enables people to navigate safely, but it slows down the traffic. So take a look at that. And that's all I have to say. So thank you. Madam Clerk?
Well-
It's, oh, I asked him, he didn't want to, Councilman, do you want to do something? I asked him.
I just wanted to make sure.
I wouldn't forget.
No, I'm not. This is to inform the general public that this meeting- This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Kropiek?
Present.
Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone. Welcome, West Orange, to our first meeting of the fall season, 2019. We welcome you all here tonight. All the ones that are just joining, just denote that I just said, our first meeting in October will be on October 7th. It's going to be a Monday night, so just please make sure you mark your calendars, it's not going to be a Tuesday night, it's going to be a Monday night. Same time, same place. At this point, I'd like to open a public comment. If you're wishing to speak to the Township Council, raise your hand. Come to the microphone, speak clearly into the microphone, slowly, your name and your address. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Good evening. Pat Segalas, Main Street, West Orange. I'd like to thank the people that came tonight from the Alzheimer Association. I'd like to bring it to your attention also, not only do they help, but like, what you need to do is, when you first realize that your loved ones are, are, have changed, their personality, their attitudes, they're forgetting, they're, you know, bring this to their, the attention of their primary care physician. Have them checked out. Don't let them know that they are, you're suspecting that it is Alzheimer's, because many times that will do it in for them. My mom suffered with Alzheimer's for 15 years, but we were able to get her checked out as soon as we found out. And even though the doctor was in denial, I insisted. So he tested her a little bit, and after a few questions, he came to realize, yet, yes, she did have Alzheimer's. So we began a regimen, medication, and after seven years, she deteriorated a little. But then they put her on an additional medication, which helped. Now, once again, this brought her through 15 years. Not many people last even 10 years with Alzheimer's. So it is very, very important that as soon as you see these symptoms or changes, bring it to the doctor's attention. Make sure, like they say, the sooner you detect it, it's a lot easier to take in control. Another thing that we did for my mom, she never went into a nursing home. We put her into a senior care facility during the day. My sister worked, I worked, my brothers live further away. We put her into a senior care over in Montclair, they took very good care, they keep them active. This is primary, this is, this is very, very important. You keep them active, you had, they play games, they go to dollar stores, they go bowling, they do arts and crafts, they have their nails done, but this is very, very important, to keep them active. And this is all I can really say, but basically, I just want to make people aware that, once you become aware, it's a lot easier to handle. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you very much. Anyone next? Yes, sir. In the back, gentlemen? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Here on personal business, I guess, my name is Brian Lawrence, live on Cleveland Terrace. I moved here in November of 2012, when our little friend Sandy visited. And since then, I've had issues with flooding in my house. I've spoken to Mr. Lepore, I've spoken to mayor, and each spring since 2014, I've been getting assurances that it would be fixed. Then my neighbors inquired about it, and the word on the street or from DPW, well, the last thing that someone said to them was that hell will freeze over before that street is fixed. I have some pictures of what happens to my property when we get a couple inches of rain, because it is a hill, and Melon Avenue is, I have been told that it's unimproved or something like that. I don't really care, it's damaging my property every time it rains. And the mayor's has been responsive, he come, he asked the guys to come out, and they had to come out and shovel, you know, barrel loads or wheelbarrow loads of gravel from my driveway. I've had my front porch repased, I've installed drainage in front of my garage, drainage in front of my front patio, and it still doesn't matter, because as you could see from the pictures, when the rocks and the asphalt come down, it blocks all of my drains. Then the water has nowhere to go, so it pools in front of my garage, goes under my garage door. When it can't go there any further, it comes onto my front porch. Last time, about a month and a half ago, it started coming in my front foyer. So I don't know what else to do. I'm not going to file a lawsuit, but my house is being damaged. I replaced my front patio two years ago, and it already has cracks in it. And the guys that did it went extra deep, they put extra strong concrete, my, the drainage in front of my garage is, is much bigger than what it should be, and it's draining out, but then that gets blocked because all the sediment, as you can see, I've put it there, I have video, but you guys probably wouldn't be able to see it, but it's just, I just need to know what, what's going to happen, because it, it shouldn't be that the house, the road is unimproved that I can't get my street fixed. The end of, so it's an intersection, or it's, I guess it's a dead end. Cleveland Terrace runs this way, and it ends, and then Melon Avenue goes up the hill. This section, when I first moved there, there was asphalt, probably another 10, 15 feet that was paved. Now it's right at the edge of my property line, and it's slowly creeping back. Every time it rains, all that comes onto my property. The water is not the biggest issue, because my drains, I think, are adequate, because they, they're, they're more than what's necessary. But the rocks and everything else that comes down, I can't do anything about it. Now, there, within the last, let's see, six months, probably five or six streets in my neighborhood, Pleasantale, have been repaved. Some repaved repeatedly because of other, I guess, work that was done. I've been told, waiting on PSCNG, waiting on New Jersey American Water, every single spring, it's the same exact thing. So I just need to know what can be done and when it will be done, so that my house can stop getting damaged.
Mr. Lawrence, if you could just please clarify what the picture with the ruler represents?
So that is the drainage, the drain in front of my garage. And those, that, the two inches or two and a half inches of sediment that's in there is all the rocks and asphalt from the street that comes down in my drain. That's inside the drain, after I removed the grates. There's another picture where you could see on the side where I have two horses, construction horses, where you see the actual pile that's sitting there, that's above the drainage before I take it out. And I have to shovel that, get it out, or else, you know, it all ends up in my garage.
May we keep these photos?
You can.
And give them to our Township Administration and our Town Engineer, and we can look into the, sir?
You can. So is there, I, I don't know if there's, is there like a certain protocol that has to be done for something to be done?
Well, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but this way, we can give it to the Township Administration, and our Township Department of Public Works and Engineer can look at it, sir.
Okay.
So it won't, it won't go on, you know, investigated, sir.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
You say this has been a problem every spring since you moved in, since 2014?
2000, I moved in 2012.
You moved in 2012?
Yes.
And the problem started in 2014?
Yes, it's been going on. But it's, and I, I, let's see, 2014, I believe it was April or May, I reached out to Mr. Lepore.
Okay. But you were having problems since you moved in 2012?
Since I moved in.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that. Just a quick question, because you, you did mention that the town had taken some steps to address your issue. Can you just go over them in as, as much detail as you can? You mentioned wheelbarrows, and I wasn't clear what the town had done so far.
Okay, so when I let the, first, I was dealing with Mr. Lepore, I was getting nowhere, just getting the same response over and over again, and then no responses. So I spoke to the mayor, came here, met with him, he came out, I believe, the next day, and looked at the problem. When I have an issue that the stones are there that I can't move them right away, and I'm not going to be home or something, I email the mayor, send him pictures, and he has DPW come out, and they come pretty quickly, if, you know, I email the day before, they come the next day, and they shovel the stones and move the stones off the property, not anything else. Actually, one other time, they, let's see, the, before I installed larger drains, they did come out to snake my drain, because it was so clogged that no water was going through. Then they said that my drain wasn't adequate. I said, "Okay, all right, that's, you know, I had permits and everything, and it was done, so I don't know if someone tells me, if the plumber or whoever's doing it tells me this is adequate, then I believe them." They said it wasn't after that time. So two weeks later, I had someone come and install even bigger PVC pipe, I believe it was six or eight inch diameter. Yes, that's pretty substantial, to lead from my garage, the front drain that you see there, all the way down to the side, that drains out. That gets clogged, because everything is just pouring inside of the drain. And it's not just the large rocks, the large rocks go on top, but the small pieces go under, that drains through. I go, we have a catch basin or something, I don't know exactly what it's called, maybe it's like a cleanout, and it still makes its way through there and clogs everything up. I have to go down and dig it out to make sure that that is unclogged. Then the top clogs. When that clogs, and it can't go any further, it comes onto my front porch. So it pills here, comes down this way, this is my garage, over here is my front patio, front porch, and then I have the same exact 10, 10 or 12 foot drain that's there, that's more than adequate, and it goes around the other side, that gets clogged, because all of this is just coming down.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll make sure that the Township addresses it and looks into it, and we'll get a report back from them.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we're sorry about your inconveniences.
All right, thank you. So is there, will they, someone reach out to me, a call, an email, the, I know the mayor has my number, Mr. Lepore has my number?
Mr. Lepore.
Right. We'll have Mr. Lepore get back to you, sir, our Township Engineer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
You. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you, yes, you.
Lisa Touzot, 15 Carter Road, and the Vice President of the Board of the West Orange Public Library. This is more in regards to a, a public service announcement to piggyback off of Councilwoman Castellino's report. We too have a very full fall schedule at the library. Thursday, September 26, New Jersey Hawks and Other Birds of Prey. The Audubon Society will be at the West Orange Public Library to help residents understand the unique characteristics of hawking and their migration and populations with the relevance to the township. In addition, on September 4th, we have Pages of Perception. Well, the 4th through the 30th has been a, an artist's, has an artist's display with a artist's reception on September 28th between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. Jitterbug and Trivia Twist is on Sunday, September 29th between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. And Saturday, October 5th, we have Emmy Award-winning Gail Perssonbaum presents her documentary, Look at Us Now, Mother, with a discussion following the viewing. In addition to the book sale on October 7th, 8th, and 10th, the Friends of the New Jersey Public Library will open the library for free books for the teachers in the district to come and help themselves for classroom libraries. We also have many Storytime programs, which can be found on the website, wopl.org, or call 973-736-0198 for Storytimes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back, you, yes, ma'am. No, not, oh, Rosary, come on up. No, come on, I was, all right. And then you're next, Rosary.
Hi, good evening. I am Charlotte Westcott. I live at 346 St. Cloud Avenue. And I missed the last meeting. Apparently, at the last meeting, there was a positive vote to preserve the 12 acres at the intersection of Mount Pleasant and Ridge Road?
No.
No?
No.
Then what, that didn't come up for a vote?
No.
Oh, okay, I wasn't here, I was out of town. Okay, then here's what I would like to encourage you to do. 12 acres at the corner of Mount Pleasant and Ridge Road, there are 800 trees in jeopardy. Not only the trees, which we all need for climate preservation, those trees do a wonderful job of absorbing moisture, wet, wet rain that will be cascading down onto Mount Pleasant Avenue, and we all know what a dangerous place that is to hydroplane. So I know that there is, there is a plan afoot to save those trees. I'm not sure where it stands, because I've been out of town, and I'm just here as an advocate for the environment, and we have a wonderful opportunity to save that little wild piece of West Orange for all of us and our children going forward. So that's what I'd like, and I encourage you, please, please, do the right thing here.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you, Charlotte. Evening, Rosary. It's good to see you.
Good to be here. Like my friend Ellie says, it's good to be up in the top, um, forward, above the land. I'll get a straight. Senior moment. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Rhodes. I guess it's pretty much common knowledge, you all know that I'm the Vice President of the, Vice Chair of the Essex County Senior Advisory Board, so I'm going to bore you with some stuff. No, I'm not going to bore you, this is really good stuff. We have a newspaper, and today we had an edition that we gave out. Today was an awesome day at the arena, there were 3,000 seniors at Wellness Day. It was awesome. It really was something, something to see, and the seniors were just so delighted. There's a lot going on in the county, and I haven't really been reporting on it, but this event happened in May. It was the Senior Gala. It was a first-time event, and it was an evening, I likened it to, what's his name, Frankie Valli's song where he says, "Oh, what a night." Senior citizens got all dressed up, we had a bar, we had mocktails, we had door-to-door transportation, three-course dinner, and we had a DJ. There were people dancing with wheelchairs, walkers, and canes. For seniors to get dressed up the way we did that night, and to have this kind of event just for us, it's such a good uplifting feeling, because we're generally home looking at television, unless we're at council meetings like me. We have a newspaper that we publish, and this is the first issue. It has photos, I'm in a lot of the photos, and I have one I'm really proud of, me with the Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver at the, I feel so important about that, about the, we were at the memorial service. So I'm going to give you these, I have a whole bunch, I'm going to give-
I'm going to give them to Laura tomorrow, and then she'll probably give them to you to put out. I have a whole bunch of those left. Today was an event...
No, I'm just going to say, make sure Joe Fagan gets a copy of this, maybe he can do it, you know?
Well, I'm going to give, I have tons of them, I'm giving to Laura, she'll give them out. I wasn't here earlier, but I heard that you did talk about the program tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's going to be a really good event. It's a safety meeting that's going to be, that's put together by the Fire Department and the Police Department. It's at Rent a House tomorrow morning. I'm disappointed that this is a night before and they won't see this on TV, and we can't get more people to know about it, but it should be, I know what the agenda is, I've been involved with it, and it's going to be an excellent event. Hopefully, you know, it'll be up with seniors. So, just to get back to the county programs, I will be reporting on programs going forward, and I would like to see more of West Orange people involved. Today, there were, I think, Anthony, what did we say, 3,000 people at the arena, at least? It was awesome. I didn't see that many West Orange people, and I had a lot of seniors coming up to me, and it was transportation, coming up to me saying, "I can't, I don't see any West Orange people here." So hopefully, with new people in place, we're going to invigorate and stimulate our seniors, they're going to attend events both in town and in the county. And I will be giving you regular updates on what's going on in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosary. Thank you. Yes, in the back, please. Susan?
Susan Lentech, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. At the August Town Council meeting, I asked that the council please purchase the 12-acre property on Mount Pleasant Avenue along the sharp curve nearing the top of the First Watchong Mountain. The reasons supporting this purchase include the fact that it is a thickly forested plot that provides habitat and refuge for many species, including one known endangered one. The trees produce large volumes of oxygen and consume large volumes of carbon dioxide, as well as provide cooling to help fight climate change. A significant portion of the property contains a steep slope, and the trees hold soil and water in place. The stretch of road below the site is already hazardous, as everybody knows. Any development on any portion of the property would exacerbate the hazards on the road. Deforestation on a grand scale contributes to mudslides, reduction in air quality, and climate change. Deforestation on a small scale, occurring in multiple places, has the same effects, like death by a thousand cuts. In response to public comment at last month's meeting, a couple of the members of the council indicated that they wanted to wait for a recommendation from the Open Space and Recreation Commission. At the commission's most recent meeting, we voted unanimously to have a resolution drafted to preserve this entire property as open space. The property fits the profile of the type of property that is described as worthy of preservation in the goals of the township's open space plan, a plan that the town council approved. We have the opportunity to purchase this property. It can be done. Even if a potential buyer makes an offer, we can present a counteroffer. The Open Space Fund contains a good percentage of the money needed to purchase the property at its current asking price. We have responsibility to the local community and the global community to do our part to steward well the treasures of this planet for the common good. Please put aside any reservations you may have, and remember the common good. The property is a treasure. Please write a resolution and vote now to purchase it and preserve it as open space. We did ask for that resolution to be done for this meeting, and we're not really sure why it wasn't done, so we'd still like you to please do it and vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally?
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
On September 11th, the Open Space Commission approved the purchase of the Mount Pleasant Avenue Forest. I wish you all were there. The room was jubilant with smiles and applause. You've heard people's deep concern about the numerous auto accidents on the steep curves of Mount Pleasant Avenue. You've heard the passion and the need to preserve 800 trees. Any development on the site, even four two-acre houses, will necessitate the loss of 500 trees. Most of you have written or stated to voters that you would vote yes to acquire this ecological gem. This is what makes voters happy and secure, green spaces with numerous trees, as they are living, visible examples of how much the town cares for the residents. Five acres were purchased on the opposite side of this forest on Mount Pleasant to hold back the stormwater. The township also bought the rock, a real rock, of six acres on the top of Mount Pleasant on a dangerous curve giving great relief to drivers. I am asking that you watch this Mount Pleasant property carefully and seize the chance to secure the root, which will create a nice triangle of green spaces. When these 800 trees are secured and preserved, residents will drive by and know the wisdom and inspired action of our town council. I support you, I encourage you, and I will celebrate with you when the sign goes up that says, "This land has been preserved for the public trust." Lastly, many of us are following this issue. I would like to ask you to keep us apprised of all the developments that may come about regarding it. And we appreciate that, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Yes, Mr. Grossman?
I want to, Harvey Grossman, public advocate, I want to thank the two previous speakers who very succinctly outlined the pluses and minuses of the purchase or non-purchase of this particular piece of property. I think we're all familiar with it. We're all familiar also with the dangerous nature of this particular piece of Mount Pleasant Avenue, and it presents a unique opportunity for the town. By preserving this piece of property, you mitigate the inherent dangers presented by that, by that, by that part of Mount Pleasant Avenue. You have the curvaceous nature of the road, you have the steep slope, and you have the negative environmental impact of reducing all of these trees. So, I encourage you to purchase this property. I do think it is within the public interest, and I have here a brief memorandum prepared by Mrs. Malanga, which really succinctly sets forth the case for a purchase, and I'd offer it to the council to make it part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is David Yenior, from Belleville. You want the address?
Can you spell your last name?
Y-E-N-N-I-O-R.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, I am the co-chair of the Gateway Group of the Sierra Club, and I was here a month ago, and I gave you a resolution on this issue about the 12 acres, but I didn't really spend much time on it, and I didn't read it to you. I don't know if you looked at it. It's a resolution calling for the preservation of the 12 acres, a forested property at the promontory of Ridge Road and Mount Pleasant Avenue in West Orange. Whereas, the property at number two and number 10, Ridge Road, consists of 12 densely forested acres on a steep slope. And whereas, it was the former site of Bowood, the 48-acre estate of L.F. Lorrie Dean, president of the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad in 1904. And whereas, the land provides important health and safety benefits to the community, and whereas, 60-car accidents have occurred in the last five years below its promontory on Mount Pleasant Avenue, which is steep and curvaceous, and whereas, the forest prevents millions of gallons of water from cascading down the steep Mount Pleasant Avenue, or becoming dangerous ice on the road in the winter, and whereas, it is important habitat for bird and animal species, including the endangered Indiana bat. Therefore, be it resolved that the New Jersey chapter of the Sierra Club requests that the township of West Orange acquire the former Bowood property for the asking price of 1.49 million, and be it further resolved that it should be preserved as passive, undeveloped open space for the purpose of retaining stormwater and for climate change remediation. You know, just the other day, Greta Thunberg, the 16-year-old phenom from Sweden spoke at the United Nations, and she said that each of us can do our little bit for the environment, and this is something you can do. I mean, it, from what I understand, this is the last piece of undeveloped land in, of this size, in West Orange. And the fact that it has this, this, really, forest there, 12 acres, it's quite immense, and this is your chance. I mean, I can't believe it's for sale for one and a half million, because it's really such a, conceivably such a valuable piece of property. But more important, it's, it'll show, if you do this, if you take a resolution out, pass that you're going to do this, commit to this, it'll, it'll show the residents of West Orange how committed you are to the environment, especially the children in all our schools, and that's why it's important, it was important for the Sierra Club to take a stand on this. This is, this is what we, this is the kind of work we do. And I wish you well in this decision, I hope it turns out in favor of preserving the 12 acres. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want, where did you get the number 1.49 million? Where'd that come from?
I thought that was public information.
Yeah, but where did that come, where did, where did that come from?
Well, there's a Realtor that posted it.
A Realtor posted it?
It's plus, it's plus a property. Says, has a Realtor's name on it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yes, all the way in the back, on this side, please? Good evening.
Hi. My name's Morgan Bush, and I'm a resident on Ridge Road. I just wanted to briefly give a different perspective on why I think it would be imperative and important for the city to purchase the 12 acres we've already been discussing. My husband and I just moved from Los Angeles to Ridge Road about three weeks ago, and, thank you, and we were looking for a place where we could start our family, a place that was a wonderful town to have children, great schools, but also close to the city, because I'm an attorney, my husband's an economist, and so between the two of us, we certainly know how to do our research and diligence. And out of all the options we had, whether moving to Westchester County in New York, other counties in New Jersey, and even other cities within Essex County, we chose West Orange, among other reasons, because of the green space it has to offer. There's a lot of public space, and that was something that we don't have, we didn't have in Los Angeles, and that was something we are looking for in our move, and West Orange really fit the bill. And I think that by purchasing this 12-acre land, not only are you showing your continued commitment to green space and saving the environment, but also attracting young families from other towns, other cities, other states, and, you know, I just wanted to offer that perspective as well. And I think that to continue to attract young families like myself and my husband, and to continue to keep us here, this would be, show a very good faith of where our property taxes are going, and that you have a continued commitment to the green space, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Shoma Sinha, S-I-N-H-A.
Can you speak into the microphone, ma'am, please?
Sure.
You can pull them, you can pull them down. Thank you so much.
Did you call me short? No.
I am too, I am too, so it's okay.
17 Sichel, S-I-C-H-E-L.
What was 17 what?
Sichel, S-I-C-H-E-L.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I read in, on Facebook, that's where we get our information, unfortunately, that a resolution that was passed by the zoning board recently, the reason why they passed it, well, they said that they probably would have gone in a different direction if more residents had come up and spoken out about the issue. And I read that and thought, hmm, that's, that's, that's an idea, you know, more and more people coming up and talking here in front, and I know it was not you, the town council, but a similar group. So I have no new fact today. We, I studied greenhouse effect, that is what we used to call in grade school. I studied about deforestation in grade school. Greta Thunberg has crossed the Atlantic to tell us things that we already know, but we don't believe in, and that is an issue. So, all of the speakers who spoke before me presented all the facts about the 800 trees, on the one hand, and the dangers of deforestation, the hydroplaning and all that stuff, and those, I am sure everybody on the council knows about that, and those are, I cannot say anything new to add to that. But I think there is a point in time where we have to stand up and say that, okay, enough of facts already, but we need to do something. I was having a conversation about my kids the other day, and I'd bring up my kids, every time I come here, I bring up my kids, because they are our future. And we were talking about what is the importance of being nice? And yeah, we, I mean, I don't believe in the word nice, to be honest, and we all need to be polite, we all need to be kind and generous, but at the same time, we need to be courageous, and we need to stand up and do something that is right at that moment. It may not be nice, in the true sense of the word. So I would urge the town council to please take into consideration that this may be a difficult decision, but it is the right thing to do at this point. And if there needs to be more people to come here and speak to you and say the same thing over and over again, if that makes more impact, then maybe that is what all of you need to do, even if you don't have the facts in hand, you understand what the problem is, and if there has to be a line over here where we come and say the same thing over and over again, to impress upon your minds how important this is, then maybe that is what we need to do. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hello. I guess I'm the opposite, right?
You can put them, you can put them back up now, sir.
I have the other problem.
this a little differently than some of the previous comments, but at the same time echoing the comments of my neighbors. My wife and I, both young professionals, moved to West Orange about a year ago. And in that move, we had multiple options. We could have went anywhere in proximity. We do our research, just like any other young professional, looking where to go, and we settled on West Orange amongst all the other Oranges, mainly because of the green space. So I'd like to comment today again on the 12 acres that are up for sale, and to offer a different perspective in three different areas, the ecological impact, the safety impact, and maybe even the sociological impact of not purchasing that land. So firstly, ecologically, you know that there's a lot, that's a 12-acre property that houses a lot of wildlife. Myself, being a resident there for the past year or so, I know that with my son, when I feed him, we like to look out the window and see the deer and all the small wildlife on the ground. But often not considered are the birds that are in the sky. On that ridge, there are often at times eagles, hawks, and it may not be well-known that eagles need a very large habitat, undisturbed, undeveloped land, to make nests, oftentimes 1,600 feet from each other. So developing in that property may just remove those species, eliminate it entirely from that part of West Orange forever. And as a father, I think I would be a terrible custodian of the environment if I was to let that happen. I'd also mention that just recently in the BBC, there was an article that the U.S. and Canada alone lost about $3 billion birds over the last 50 years, and for similar reasons such as this small deforestation. On the safety impact, being a resident of Ridge Road, I know intimately well how dangerous that corner can be. I won't, you know, rehash the, the need for the trees to soak up the water on the retaining wall. But anecdotally, when we had the snowpocalypse last year, I had a four-wheeler, I was going around and helping people out. I actually had to take my contractor home because his Uber couldn't make it. And on the way back to my property, trying to turn into Ridge Road, another young lady and her Uber driver actually slid into that embankment. It wasn't a serious accident. They were a little bit shaken, but he had gotten too close to the right-hand shoulder, you can imagine, hit some ice, and just slid off the road. So I pulled him out, everybody was fine, went on their way. But I just wanted to relay the story of how important it is to keep that corner safe. Not only that, I'll skip over to the sociological impact. If you can imagine someone purchasing 12 acres on Ridge Road, there's one reason they want it, is to develop it, and let's not mince words, they're going to clearcut it. When they clearcut it, they're going to add tons of property. It is a small road. It was meant just to support the small number of houses that are on that road. It's about a 20-foot entrance on that road. I think it's an acute-angle entrance coming from the eastbound side, which is dangerous by itself, and then also a blind turn coming left, coming up Mount Pleasant on that side. And with the residents on that road just by themselves, it's sometimes difficult to come in and out. So adding more neighbors on that road, I'm not sure how safe that would be in terms of the traffic on Mount Pleasant. Further so, if one private party intended on purchasing that 12 acres, they would own the retaining wall, which is 100 years old. And if they saw the same problem, sorry, I'm an engineer, if they see the same problem that I see, they're going to have to cut down a 100-year-old wall. So I feel like I'm going along, so I'll just skip to the end. But we moved to West Orange because we were attracted by the character of West Orange, by its green spaces, by its history. And by not purchasing this land, I feel that you may be losing two of those great qualities that we had initially thought were here. If my son does grow up in West Orange and doesn't have the history that we saw when we moved here, and doesn't have the wildlife that we saw that we moved here, I'm not sure why we bought the property. And that's, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Frank Freskett. I live on 12 Burnett Terrace. And just inspired by all the people who are giving their input on how their feelings are for this, this 12 acres that we've been talking about. And I just want to share, I live near Turtleback, and just the woodlands there, I wouldn't know what to do if that was ever, like, taken away from me. So I can really sympathize with what their concerns are, just strictly about just the safety and the runoff. And it's kind of like, I don't know if it's a little ironic, we have a gentleman came in and almost started the whole, uh, uh, tonight with his problems with his drainage and runoff, and what water can do. And it's kind of a coincidence, or it's ironic, but we're talking about a guy who's having a water problem, and then we're discussing about a problem that could happen if we don't do the right decision about having further water problems, and also traffic and accidents of that sort. So I'm behind these people, and I imagine there's a lot of people who don't even know about this issue. Most people are working hard, they don't have time to really do their studying and research, and they're complacent, and they don't know what's going on. So oftentimes, it's the few that represent the many. And I believe probably this is it, again, probably something is just that. I hope you do the right thing, make Teddy Roosevelt proud. Because he was a big guy preserving our national woodlands, our forests, our parks, and it's a beautiful area. We don't want this to be like a Newark or Hoboken, or, you know, the towns that are further east of us. We go, we go further west, Jersey is a garden state, and we want to preserve it that way. So I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. In the front, in that row? Yes, ma'am.
I want to add my voice to the crescendo of voices of the public that is going to ask you to vote on the resolution to preserve the 12 acres of land and 800 trees in West Orange, on the last piece of undeveloped ridgeline on First Mountain. Like many of my neighbors here, I was at a meeting exactly two weeks ago, the Open Space Commission, and many of my neighbors and myself spoke, and we talked about all the arguments that have been made, ecological arguments, social arguments, the arguments about public safety in our neighborhood. And it was voted unanimously by the Open Space Commission that this land should be preserved. You have many tools in your toolbox as the town council representing these people and these voices. You have eminent domain, you have all the tools, you have a resolution, it has been already drafted. We have come here because we thought there was an important vote, and we wanted to speak to that vote, and encourage you to vote yes, to preserve these 12 acres of land. We were surprised to find out that there was no vote today. We were surprised that the Open Space Commission, who unanimously recommended that this preservation take place, we want you to go ahead and do this. I've lived in this neighborhood for 18 years. I was at a meeting with the two people who spoke here who are new neighbors. One had been here just one week, and one had been here a year, both of whom have spoken tonight. You have people coming to this area for the sole reason that there is open space, that there is green space, that it is livable. Don't take that away, because these fine people will not move here. So we need to protect our neighborhood, we need to protect our environment. We're in a time of unbelievable, not just climate change, but climate crisis. We are all looking at that and knowing that what we can do is save the trees that absorb the toxicity, that absorb the water, that preserve our lives. And we're asking you to preserve this land. You have the ability, you have the tools, you have a resolution, there is no time to waste. A developer should not be moving in to this property, because this property is what keeps us here, and what keeps us and our children, and we want to preserve it for generations to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Dove Garden, spelled D-O-V, last name is G-A-R-D-I-N. I live on Five Cliff Street, and I am, I own a house on 60 Mellon, near where Brian lives, we heard from him a bit earlier. So before I talk about that specific issue, I do want to say it's really inspiring to hear so many people talk about preserving green space here. It's not why I'd originally come up here to speak, but, and I don't live near that specific area, but, you know, I would second everything that I've heard here, right? It's a defining characteristic of West Orange that we have open green space, it's who we are. I've been here for six years, and like, I think, many people, part of the reason why my wife and I moved here and want to raise a family here is because of that green space. So I think, you know, I didn't come here to talk about that, but I can fully understand and support all of the arguments that everybody here made. So I just kind of wanted to lend my voice to theirs, you know, however small that might be. Getting back to originally why I came and what I wanted to speak about is, you heard from Brian about Upper Mellon Avenue, there are four homes there that are serviced by that road, with 60 Mellon mine being at the top. And that road, in the year or so that I've been kind of going up to that area, is just getting worse and worse, it's terrible, and it's getting to the point where it's downright dangerous. Brian has issues with flooding, driving up there is really terrible. I mean, that road is like something you would expect to see perhaps in a country that doesn't have the means to maintain their infrastructure. And I think, you know, aside from the fact that, yes, the responsibility of the town to keep our roads in good shape, I think it's also a defining characteristic of West Orange, that we're a pleasant place to live, right? It's not a place where we have crumbling roads, where we kind of ignore elements of infrastructure. I know this is only a small piece, there are other roads that need, that need to be rehabbed, but it's gotten to the point where it really does need immediate attention. So I wanted to lend my voice to Brian's and request all of your support in ensuring that Upper Mellon Avenue gets the same treatment and maintenance as all the other roads in West Orange, to maintain and preserve really the character of West Orange being a well-maintained, pleasant place to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, in the back, please.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after one of the other speakers talked about how all of the people in the room who are in support should get up and speak, and I have frequently been one of the only people speaking on certain issues, I thought I would get up and lend my voice to the support for the purchase of the 12 acres of undeveloped land on Ridge Road. I just want to point out, I just echo what everyone else says in terms of the value of it to the town in terms of an environmental issue, as well as a recreational, a feel-good aspect of West Orange having so much open space. The other point I'd like to make is that earlier this year, we significantly increased the tax that we taxpayers pay into the Open Space Trust Fund. And in fact, that's where we would pay for, we would get the funding in some part for this purchase. And the whole point of the Open Space Trust Fund is to purchase open space. I don't, I, for a few years, I used to come to as a volunteer to the Open Space Commission meetings, and know that there are not very many reasonable pieces of open space left in this town. This property on Mount Pleasant and Ridge Road is one of those pieces of property, and therefore, we, the people of West Orange who put our money into the Open Space Trust Fund, are asking for the council to put forth a resolution to purchase this. The Open Space Commission, who is charged with the responsibility of making these recommendations, has already unanimously endorsed this purchase, and people have been coming to multiple, to multiple council meetings to speak their mind about this. So I would just like to add my voice to theirs and urge you to find a way. There's always a way, especially when you're at the township, a government entity, there is a way to find. I believe the owner of the property is a longtime resident of the town and has always had a very good relationship with West Orange. So I'd urge us to find a way to purchase this property.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. Anyone else? Mr. Paglisi? You look like you just came from the wellness fair.
I'm going to stand by here so I don't see my legs, I'm wearing shorts, so. Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. Yes, I did come from the Senior Wellness Day at Cody Arena. It was the 14th annual event, and as Rosemary said earlier, we did have approximately 3,000 seniors come from throughout the county. And the, like I've said in the past at these meetings, the goal of the event is to provide seniors with a fun-filled day where they can form new friendships, cultivate relationships, learn how, learn a healthy lifestyle, and learn how to remain independent living in the community. And I think with the range of vendors that we had today, we had over 70 vendors who participated, I think we were able to do that. And we just look forward to next year, it'll probably be sometime in September when we do this, that's usually when we do it. So now I just want to share some other upcoming events. September 28th at our Environmental Center is the Fall Family Festival, which celebrates the fall, obviously. October 4th in Cedar Grove is our Household Hazers Waste Collection Day. And then at that same site, on October 19th is the Computer Electronics Recycling Day. Then on, we do have five dog parks in our park system. At four of those locations, we have canine parades and contests. So on October 19th at Branch Brook Park in the morning, and Hilltop Dog Park in the afternoon. And then on October 26th, Brookdale Park in the morning, South Mountain Reservation in the afternoon. And then finally, October 25th at the Presby Memorial Irish Gardens is our Gardens of Glow, where we line the flower beds with jack-o'-lanterns. And I just want to add something, you had the Alzheimer's Association that started this meeting, we do partner with them. They held a June Walk at the South Mountain Recreation Complex, and they're part of Essex County Cares, which the county executive highlights a number of charitable organizations that host walks, runs, other types of awareness events throughout the park system. So we're pleased to have them as a partner, I think this was the second year that we partnered with them, and we would definitely invite them back for a third year.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, all this information is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I now close. Okay, I now close, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy.
Good evening, Tammy Williams, Hillside Avenue. Just coming to bring a couple of community service announcements. Today, the West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition participated with the West Orange High School Girls Volleyball Team for a suicide awareness and prevention event. At their volleyball game, they played Verona, JV was successful. Unfortunately, the girls volleyball game for the varsity was not so successful, but we did have an opportunity to talk about suicide prevention and awareness. September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and our coalition is culminating these activities for the month of September with a 5K walk-run for Zach at Rock Spring Golf Club on October 6th. So the community is welcome to participate, walk-run, there'll be food trucks, vendors, DJ games, and of course, the walk and the beautiful views at Rock Spring Golf Club. In addition to that, serving and switching hats as HRC Chairwoman, just wanted to make everyone aware that for the remainder of the year, we will be doing First Fridays at the Rent-a-House with the seniors, we do senior line dancing, and on Third Wednesdays, we do senior line dancing at the Degnan House. Everyone is welcome to participate, come out and have fun. Time is from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at both locations, and more to come. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of the things that we're doing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, at that juncture, I now close public comment, and I open it to my council colleagues. Councilwoman Katsalina.
Okay, I'll start off with the easy one. Thank you, Tammy, for all your advocacy, working really hard, and I know your events have been very successful, so we appreciate all your dedication to the community, and I hope everyone can come out to the walk on the 6th, and hopefully the weather will cooperate for you. Let's see here, so, let me cover these other items first before I get to the property purchase. Mr. Lawrence, Brian, thank you so much for coming down, and I feel bad that you actually had to come to a council meeting and sit here, but nice to meet you and glad you came out. Administration, I'm sure, will investigate. I know from talking to Mr. Lepore, our township engineer, at least once a week with various issues that I have to report to him, I know when it comes to roads and repairway, I would hope, and I really hope, your repairs haven't been done because of the work, public service, and because of the water company. And they have really delayed us with a lot of repairs within the township. Public service has been on my street for good over a month now, changing all the meters out, and we have to go by their schedule, same thing with the water company. And I hope Mr. Sayers, that is the reason for the delay, but in the interim, you would hope that, you know, that we could try to serve you in other capacities. So I'm sure they'll be in touch with you, but in my experience, any other complaint that I've been bringing to Mr. Lepore, not to put blame on the water company and the public service, but they have delayed us with many of our projects. And, you know, they're just, it's very time-consuming, changing all the meters out and redoing our infrastructure, but as he explained to me, we're not going to go ahead and resurface without the infrastructure repairs being done. It would just, would be a waste, so I know you're frustrated, so I'm anxious to hear what he has to say in regards to your situation. And I know those hills are steep there, I know the area, I have friends that live up there, and it's an incline, it's a huge incline, so I could just imagine the water flow coming down with the hard rain, so. But thank you for coming down and bringing your attention, and we'll definitely follow up with him. Ms. Morelli, thank you for more information. As far as the event today, I know Ms. Van Dyke and Ms. Sanders has been in touch and getting information out, and I know they were offering transportation today. I don't know who took advantage of it and who didn't. So I know they've been trying to do an outreach, so I'm curious to see how many folks, you know, took advantage of the situation today. And hopefully we'll have a good turnout tomorrow, but I know they've been diligent with outreach into our seniors and trying to get folks more involved in our programs. Because we have a lot of great programs, and with the county too, very impressive, all the work that is being done, and we want to get folks out. So if you're at home or folks in the audience, the phone number to forest in your service department is 973-325-4105. You could go on our website, we have so many great, new, exciting programs, we hope you take advantage of them, and they're all right there, available on the website. Okay, I think that's everything besides the resolution, which, we don't have a resolution this evening. We received a copy of an email of, and I appreciate all the committee and all that went to the meeting, that you took a vote. So we received, the council received an email that you voted to want to preserve this property, and it went to legal. And I was under the impression, I thought maybe, I know our council liaison, I'm not sure if you were going to get involved with writing a resolution or presenting something to us, but there's a few factors here, and I'm going to state this. Of course, it's easy to, you know, to think about preserving open space. I mean, with all that's going on in the world today, and just for those of you that don't know me, I grew up here in the township. And where I grew up, I lived in a few places within the town, but when I was in high school, we had lived next to the property that is known as the rock. And I, we lived there when the forest was existing on that property, and then we were in a panic when the bulldozers came down and took all the trees down, all within a very quick period of time. And, you know, we had flooding in our home from it. And so I'm very well aware, and the shame about it all, now that property has been preserved, but at the time, the developer that bought it at the time didn't realize, and I don't know why, because it's on a rock, we call it the rock now, but it's all built on bedrock. And so they, it wasn't buildable, or you could build it, but it's very expensive to build upon. So that property sat there for years, years, and the wild turkeys and all the habitat that was in there, the animal habitat, you know, was now in our driveway. So it was very interesting, many interesting years, and I know that's when my mother became very friendly with Mr. Sayers, Mr. Lepore, and then Mayor McKeon. So I'm more than familiar on what the devastation of removing a forest can do, unfortunately, I know firsthand. Another situation we had in the township years ago was the West Essex Highlands, when they came to be built at the time, all my friends, PTA, Redwood School, we all had to help each other out because that neighborhood was flooded when the storms first came and when the building was first being done. So again, I'm very well aware of the situations. I was one of the four council members here that voted and supported the purchase of Rock Spring, where we just preserved 140 acres. But with this purchase, again, I'm not opposed to it, but we don't have, all the information hasn't been presented to us. So, and I mean in regards to as far as pricing, on how we would pay for it. Rock Spring, we had a full presentation given to us, and it was easy to make an educated decision on that because information was presented to us. This property has some various challenges, which I know, I've been up there, I looked at it, Sally had invited me to come up there, I've been up there, driving there numerous times. And also, I know firsthand unfortunately of the water going down the mountain, because when I was 17 and the roads froze over, my car slid all the way down the hills, I went into one of the embankments. So I know firsthand, so as far as understanding the situation, I'm well aware of it. You know, this is on a private road, it's private property. The good news is we have a steep slope ordinance that protects the ridge, there is bedrock there, there are challenges for a developer to come in, especially with the ingress-andgress going in and out. So many, many variances, we'd have to go to a planning department, not an easy, developable property as a Rock Spring property would have been. That being said, again, we still need information on the cost. I know, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gross if he wants to jump in, because I picked his brain for a good hour yesterday, in regards how we would pay for the property. I believe there's about $940,000 in the open space fund around there, but you just can't drain that out, you can't just take a bond and say, let's pay for the rest of it with a bond, and, you know, and just pay it back next year when we receive monies. And yes, it's true, Mrs. Krkowiak, that we are, we do have an increase of funding for next year, but I'll let Mr. Gross explain to us what he told me yesterday in regards to, that money also goes to the open space properties that we have and to maintain them. Again, we have a private road, I've had asked before, what would it cost the township to maintain? One of the residents mentioned the, Jeremy, I think it was you, the wall, we would have to maintain that wall now. So again, I'm not opposed to saying that we shouldn't do it because we have to pay for a wall, but I don't have the information. So these are, you know, we need valid information to make educated decisions, and so with that, Mr. Gross, could you just explain a little bit how we could go about doing this? I know we would have to bond this out for a few years, we just couldn't pay for it all at once. I think the committee is of the understanding that we would be able to do this, and I think we, it would need a little bit more in-depth conversation on this, wouldn't it?
Well, I think, I think the very first thing council needs to decide, whether they want to move forward with that, and then there's a lot of due diligence that needs to be done if council wants to move forward with it. It will, will, without going into a lot of details on numbers, since we don't know what the numbers are, we have, we've heard some numbers, but we don't really know, it's fair to presume that whatever the purchase price would be of the parcels would be more than what we have in reserve. And therefore, some combination of reserve and borrowing would be required in order to purchase a property of this nature. And then if indeed, you know, once you know what the sales price is, then you can put together a plan that would meet the needs now and in the future of the township for open space funds. You know, I don't know that, I certainly don't think it would be prudent to drain your entire fund and then borrow the balance, because I think, you know, you have obligations day in, day out during the year that you need to fund in years' future, as well as whatever considerations there may be for other projects such as ultimately Rock Spring. So the bottom line is, once you, once the council decides to go in a certain direction, and the due diligence is done to find out what the property challenges actually are, who has interest in the different roads and the walls and things of that nature, and what would be township responsibility, and what might be shared with others, then you can put together a financial plan and come back to say, well, this is what it's going to cost to purchase, this is what it's going to cost to maintain moving forward, and this is how you might buy it if this was decided to do.
Council President, if I can just add, a resolution's not going to come until the council governing body decides what it wants to do. I mean, we don't, as far as concerned, it's not the resolution from the Open Space Committee, that's a recommendation to this body. I don't know what reports they've submitted, they haven't provided to me, in terms of their plans and so forth, how they thought about financing it and so forth, which is all contemplated in the ordinance. But it's not until you decide as a body, after deliberation and due diligence, that we would prepare a resolution. Thank you, Mr. Kaser. Councilwoman?
So, yeah, so again, we received an email that just stated that the committee voted on supporting a resolution, but we didn't receive any other, for other information other than that one email. So when, and I'm going to apologize to folks who I haven't emailed back, because I had, and I was on the phone, Mr. Kaser, myself, because I was looking for an answer on, you know, was there a resolution, and how do I respond to the public, because I really couldn't. All I had was an email that said this was going in for a recommendation to draw a resolution. So I apologize, but I will get back to each and every one of you when I could craft an email for you. And with that being stated, I will just ask my colleagues again if we will discuss this further, but also be mindful of, because I am involved in real estate, you know, we don't want to be negotiating in public, so I would ask Mr. Kaser to, you know, if any one of us misspeaks at any time, you know, to jump out at us and if we were to go into discussion.
Right now, there are no contract negotiations, we're not at that, anywhere near that point, so.
I watch what we say.
Don't get worried about that. The issue of whether you want to buy this property, you're not buying this property, you're part of the property, is up to you guys, you have to make a decision, but you have to do your due diligence.
Okay. And just to, just one last comment, I think it was Frank, love Teddy Roosevelt, he's a great president, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, ma'am.
First, thank you for everyone who took the time to come out to, once again, lend your voice and advocacy, I really, really appreciate it. I want to welcome all of our new residents to town and to town council, please don't let this be your first and last time you come, but if time is limiting for you, you can go on our website to catch up and keep up with what we're doing on town council, because these meetings are recorded, so please make sure you check in on us from time to time. Mr. Lawrence, I'll start with you. I canvass, I'm a newly elected official, for those of you who are new here, so I'm very familiar with your area because I canvassed just about every street in West Orange, and that was quite challenging. And I remember looking up that long road to Mellon, I was like, who lives up there? Wow, it's really impressive. But it's beautiful, we live in a beautiful town, we're very, very blessed to, unfortunate to be able to live here. I am concerned, and not having any further information, I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and I'm sure my council colleagues and I will get further information from the administration as to what the situation is, and again, being new, I don't know how long it takes or delays for public service to change meters, but I'd imagine five years is probably a long time. So I think that, rest assured, between all of us, we will, you know, at least find out what the delay is and have an answer for you as well. And again, if we don't get back to you, please come back to visit us. Ms. Morelli, I saw the, there was a, I don't want to say a clown, but a gentleman on stilts right in front of the arena today, and I was so sour that I had to go to work and all the festivities were happening on our, it looked like a tremendous event. I'm sorry that I could not participate, but it really, really did look like an amazing event, and thank you for always coming to advocate as well and for sharing the newspaper, I'm looking forward to reading it. And you and I both met, our new life coordinator here in West Orange, John, at the high school arena, so I'm looking forward to a lot of collaboration with the county and now our wonderful new addition to our health department. And, let's see, Mr. Garden, by way of response to Mr. Lawrence, please understand that that is also my response, I am concerned that you are expressing that it's also getting worse and worse, and, you know, to the point of dangerous, and, you know, being charged as elected officials, and we will look into that. I think that is- I think that is all for everyone who spoke outside of the Ridge Road. And I will also apologize for not responding to the second batch of emails that I received. With respect to that, I did try to get back to everyone when I, as soon as I got your emails, and my response came from the fact that the last time we were here, a town council, we did express a willingness and a desire, if the environmental commission were to take a position on it, that we would consider that position. So, my response, to everyone who received my response, which was, "I am supportive of that purchase," came from that, and also with the understanding as well that the open space commission has its own funds, and understanding that it's never, ever prudent to exhaust all of your fundings, wherever they may be. I also was driven by the mayor's presentation during the whole Rock Spring presentation, where he said that it was up to the commission, the environmental commission, the open space funds, what they did with that funding. So, my response was driven by those two platforms, because I do support preserving open space and the gentleman from Sierra, from the Sierra Club. And if you have not watched the Greta Thunberg UN address, please do so. What an incredible inspiration that young woman is, and what she said to open was, "My message to you is that we will be watching," and I'm sure that's exactly what is happening here. I too feel a sense of urgency, watching what's happening globally. You know, it's not just a matter of, for me, looking at the expense of retaining wall, I think that it's more important for us to do what each one of us can do to ensure that we participate in preserving what we can, where we can. And we are, we're very limited in the open space we have left in West Orange, so I'm also thinking from that perspective, that if there are funds, and that we will continue to collect through taxes, that we will be able to have a plan, that should we be able to acquire it, could maintain that. So, there are a lot of moving pieces, but I am extremely supportive of this open space. I am going to ask my council colleagues, as well as the administration, to consider what that plan would look like in acquiring this road. The fact that it is a private road is of no consequence to my consideration, because we all publicly use that street, and that is a very dangerous street. And at the end of the day, it's more than just a safety concern for me, you know. One of the things that Greta said yesterday, and I won't read you the whole thing, but she said, "Entire ecosystems are collapsing, we are in the beginning of a mass extinction, and all you can talk about is money and fairy tales of eternal economic growth, how dare you?" I will not be that "how dare you." I think that we have to look at it in totality, figure out, like Mr. Kaiser said, what the council wants to do in that regard, and then plan to move forward with a plan, and assess that plan, and see where we are. That is my position on it, I would hope that my council colleagues would also join me in that platform, but that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
We'll start with Ridge Road then, to pick up, actually, I wanted to thank Mrs. Sagallas for coming and sharing her personal story about her mother.
Oh, yeah.
And Michelle, sorry, Councilwoman Castellino, sharing her story about trials and tribulations in West Orange, and open space and preserving open space. You know, there was a letter, a recommendation from the open space that was sent to the council, sent to the clerk's office. It was intercepted, because during that same week, the mayor was having a meeting on that Friday, so rather to get into any type of, I want to say bidding, war with this person that came to speak to the mayor about the property on Ridge Road, the letter didn't come to the council. So, that's really all we have, I do have Mr. Yanore's Sierra Club resolution here, a lot of things would have been compiled together to create a resolution. And we're being told that we can move forward, but we still have a lot of questions that have not been answered, because there's also a tax implication involved with preserving this. There are, as you just heard, there are not enough funds to purchase the land, we have, we would need funds to maintain it, and it was stated earlier about how our meeting with Mr., I mean, they, how our meeting this evening just started with Mr. Lawrence talking about water cascading down. What we're saying is that it's undeveloped land at the top of Mellon Avenue, this is undeveloped land, and we're talking about water cascading down Mount Pleasant Avenue. Similar, which would mean that the township, again, a tax implication on how to, how do we prevent that from happening? So, that adds another tax implication to this whole purchase. One of the lots is assessed at $471,800, and they are paying $19,051 on unimproved land. The other lot is 6.9 acres, that's assessed at $524,000, they're paying taxes of $21,800. Again, I keep talking about tax implication, because of course we want to preserve land, but we also want to balance what this would mean to the taxpayers. And though we know that this is what they're paying in taxes, this, we just had our budget meeting a few months ago, no one wanted to talk about taxes then, this is, this will have a direct impact on our taxes, between the bonding, figuring out how much to maintain it, if we have to do any type of stormwater control for the water, if we have to maintain that wall historic. I love the comments that were made about the character and history in our town, that's exactly why we moved here 36 years ago as well. So, there's a lot to be considered, you know, yes, we do want to preserve, but to me, it's a decision of balancing the two, and until we have that information, I don't see how we can move forward unless we have that information. So, I welcome Mr. Edwards and Ms. English to West Orange, and thank everyone for all the comments that they made on Ridge Road, but we have been asking for this information, and until we have it, I'm not able to make that decision right now. To me, the imminent threat of development was when we were presented with Rock Spring. That was 130 acres that we knew would have easily been, it's pristine property, would have easily been developed. So, that to me was a very, very easy decision to make, because it was 130 acres, we know we have to carve something out of that to develop, to make up for the $588,000 that we lost in the revenue. But it was, it's public space, we can all use it. So, I am a little bit hung up that it is a private road, and we talk about open space funds, those are public funds that would need to be used to preserve space on a private road, I have a little bit of a problem with that as well. As opposed to Ridge Way Avenue, when those were six acres, it was zoned for single-family homes, six houses could have fit very comfortably there, instead, open space preserved that, and now we have a beautiful park, public funds used for a public space. And we just, and I just mentioned Rock Spring, same idea. So, until we get more information, I'm not ready to make that decision. And Mr. Lawrence, of course, we will have the engineer, I'm sorry, he's not here to answer all of those questions for us. I wanted to also thank Tammy Williams, this suicide prevention, you know, I feel, it was initiated just only a few months ago with the assembly at Roosevelt Middle School, and in just a really short amount of time, so much work has been done with the schools. We have this very receptive Dr. Cassone Superintendent at the school, who is so receptive, he, you know, he just wants us all to be involved, and I know you're doing a lot of work with the schools, so I'm happy to see that happening in such a short amount, we have such a short amount of time, we have collaborated with so much to pool our resources, and every day we hear more and more. I wanted to ask, oh, Anthony, Anthony's still here, with this 14th Annual Wellness Day, many of the events even that I chair, I have a sign-in sheet, and I ask people how they heard about the event. And I was wondering if you did, I was going to send you an email on this anyway, but just to ask how they do, because we're always concerned about reaching seniors, if they saw it on Facebook, or social media, or mailings are costly, so we're always curious to hear how people hear about events and come out, and if you have a signup sheet, to continue keeping them informed on things that are happening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Krokowiac.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight was just yet the latest example of how thoughtful and articulate so many of our residents are. You spoke on these subjects much better than I could, so I just want to say thank you, and I support just about everything that was said tonight. First, about Mr. Lawrence and Mellon Avenue, I am very sorry to hear that this has been going on for him since 2012, and that he's been talking to the town since 2014. I just, I can't imagine the nightmare, those of you who may own homes, put yourselves in his shoes. So, I would like a response tonight from the administration, if it's appropriate, but certainly a report by the next council meeting on its evaluation of this situation, why it's been going on for so long, and what we're planning to do to fix this. Mr. Sears?
I need to speak to Mr. La Cour and figure out what's actually going on up there.
Okay.
So, I will be talking to him tomorrow.
Great, and we'll...
Actually, I already called him, to be honest with you, I already spoke to him tonight.
Great, so we can certainly set aside some time to discuss this at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. As some of you may know, I'm the council liaison to the Open Space Committee, and I've been so for many years. And for those of you who keep up with the council, probably know that I've been advocating for the purchase of this property for a long time. How long, you ask? You may be shocked to know that this month is the third anniversary of the first open space vote recommending starting the process to acquire these properties. The law prescribes a process that requires two appraisals. It literally took more than a year to get a resolution before the council, just to have the first appraisal authorized and done, and the delays have continued. The Open Space Committee voted again, this time unanimously, to move forward with this purchase on September 11th. The next day, an email from the chairman was sent to the appropriate government officials, asking them to move forward on this. This is what he said, "Hello, Karen," referring to the municipal clerk, "on October 9th, 2011, the Open Space and Recreation Commission voted 6-0 to recommend the Township Council use open space funds to purchase the following properties, 2 Ridge Road, Block 80.03, Lot 21, and 10 Ridge Road, Blocks 80.03, Lot 10. Karen, can you send this information to our legal department to prepare a resolution so it can be presented to the Township Council for its consideration?" And Ms. Carnaval sent it along the same day. So, when the council didn't hear anything on this, as Councilwoman Castellino mentioned, a week later, she sent an email asking about this. First, she asked the clerk where it was on the agenda for this meeting tonight, and she said she didn't have anything on the agenda for the meeting tonight. Then Councilwoman Castellino sent another email the next day, asking the administration what was going on. There was no response to that email. I asked that same day in an email to the administration what was going on, and Mr. Sears called me to say the administration did nothing on this, because someone, and I'm not exactly clear whether it's he or Police Chief Abbott, had heard that the properties were no longer available for sale. Again, I'm paraphrasing Mr. Sears, and if I speak incorrectly, if he wants to clarify, please, you know, do so. So, I immediately sent an email informing the entire council and the Open Space Committee of what the status of the situation was, neither of which had received any sort of email information that I was part of. Then the next day, I sent an email to the council president. Under our rules, this close to a meeting requires the council president to approve adding something to the agenda. So, I sent an email to him and others, asking for the draft, because regardless of the status of the availability of the properties, which of course, as we all know in real estate, can change day to day, you still need council authorization to move forward with negotiations and due diligence. You put it in place, and then you move on it. Council President didn't respond to my email, and he didn't respond to the follow-up email I sent today. This sort of slow-walking and lack of information and transparency, as some of tonight's speakers talked about, and as I think Councilwoman Castellino referenced, is very frustrating. Let me try to be clear, the council has to give its authorization to the administration to start negotiations and due diligence before anything can happen. That is what we have done in multiple open space acquisitions in the 10 years that I've been on the council. We have an authorization vote, and then the administration does its thing and comes back to us with their recommendation, and we can vote on that. That's how each one of them has happened. It's now more than three years, and we still haven't gotten to that resolution. Now, Mr. Kaiser says, "We have to decide whether we're going to support this or not tonight before they're going to do a resolution." Most of the people on this council have voted for legislation related to Ridge Road in the past, I don't believe Councilman Matude Brown has, and they've also, I think, expressed support for this transaction. So, I would like tonight to find out if my colleagues are going to vote to simply authorize the administration to move forward with due diligence, and to move forward with the negotiations, and find out exactly what's going on, as we have done in multiple other open space authorizations in the past. And if we're not, good, we'll just forget it all. But I want everybody to go on the record and say, "I'm not going to vote to move forward," because that's the way we've done it. We vote to authorize moving forward, and then the administration comes back with its recommendation. That's how it works. I join you, and not knowing a lot of the implications of this, but this is not the time when we should expect to be getting that. We should authorize moving forward, and then wait for the, and as quickly as the administration can come back to us, so we can move forward on this. If we had not been waiting three years to get to this point, perhaps the properties would not be in whatever negotiating position they appear to be now. I'm also concerned about the tax implications, but as one of the speakers talked about, we have an open space fund that is funded with taxes, we've recently increased the taxes, and I am all in favor of spending every last penny of the open space trust fund to acquire open space. What the hell, what the heck else are you going to spend it on? And I'll also point out that what we've done previously, and I'm thinking the Ridgeway property, is we didn't even spend a lot of the money in the open space fund, which I recommended to do, I wanted to do that. We borrowed most of the money, we borrowed it, so not only did we pay for the property, we paid the interest on the borrowing. And guess how we financed the payback of the borrowing for Ridgeway property? From future open space fund taxes. We can do the exact same thing here. And again, I join Councilwoman McCartney in being concerned about any time we take open space off the property tax rolls. It's a balancing act, and you have to decide whether you're going to do that or not. But I will point out, for the Rock Spring purchase, we took many multiples of the property tax revenue from Rock Spring off of the tax rolls than we're talking about here, all right? Many multiples of property tax revenues are gone from Rock Spring than we're talking about here. So, I really, before this meeting... So, I, really, before this meeting gets over, I want to ask my colleagues to express whether they are going to support an authorization so that we can move forward on this, and not take another three years to try to, to move forward on this. This is just, I, I just find it unconscionable. And, uh, I really, I just think we should just, uh, we should just move forward on this. Because we can't get a lot of these answers until we authorize it, and the administration can do its due diligence and get back to us. And we can also have the opportunity to provide more transparency and more information to you guys out there. Not to mention us on the council. Thank you.
You're done?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, you may, 'cause then I'm gonna do my thing, but go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point of clarification, Councilmen. You started out saying how civil this evening was, and then you assumed this tone. And you're, you voted no on Rock Spring, first of all. And the point of clarification is that you're saying that this started three years ago. You were council president three years ago. You had that whole letter of recommendation at that time, and it never came forward. I was council president the following year, three months into my term as council president, you were blaming me for not putting it on the, on the council agenda. So, I, I just had to make that point of clarification, going back three years. If you're saying that's how long the discussion was, you could have done it then.
Thank you. No, 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 no. You've, you've-
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 no.
She spoke factually-
No, 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 no.
Excuse me.
Factually incorrectly.
Excuse me.
And I'll be glad to read the email.
No, you spoke factually, excuse me.
And I'll be glad to read the email proving that you are factually incorrect.
Why don't you walk out like last time? Excuse me. First of all, what you said was incorrect, and I'm offended by what you said. So, you're saying because you sent me an email and answered you, first of all, there was nothing. Please, please be civil. Be civil, okay? Please. And you're saying transparency? Are you accusing me of something? Because if you are, just look at yourself about accusing. No, no, he, you know, he likes to throw falsehoods around and everything else, and I'm not gonna sit there and take it. I've done more for this town than you've ever done. Okay? Now-
Okay, okay.
No, 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 no. All be quiet. I've listened to you people. Now, listen.
That's rude.
No, no, really.
Can't tell me to be quiet.
Well, then, fine, then we vote for it. That's all.
Okay.
We're not voting tonight. First of all, I'm gonna thank the Alzheimer's community for being here tonight. It's a very, very important issue. It's something that we need to bring to our seniors, and not only our seniors, there are people younger that, who get Alzheimer's. And we need to make that information out to them, 'cause I've seen too many people die because of it. And it's something we really have to be concerned of. Mr. Bryan, about your street, I know now the administration will look into it, will make sure we get a report back why it's been since 2012. So, I'm very disappointed to hear that, but we'd like to get explanations, and I'm sure Ms. Laporte, and I'm sure the administration will work that out, and will get you your, your information. Rosary, good job. The only thing is, I'm a little disappointed, Rosary, you didn't invite me to be your date at this thing, so, you know, I really would've had a good time and everything else, but you can think about it for, for next year. With Ridge Road, Councilman, please. With Ridge Road and open space is very important to me. The four of us here voted for the golf course. 139 acres of pristine land is now preserved entirely for all the residents of West Orange. And that's very important. Acquiring other lands, and I've always been interested in Ridge Road, but you can't rush into something without doing your due diligence, without doing the information we need. I picked Mr. Gross's brain. I'm waiting for Mr. Laporte to get back to me about the improvements, the retaining wall. I'm waiting for the forester to get back to me about the trees, and the status of the trees there. 'Cause once we buy it, and we run into buying it, we are now responsible for that property. And we need to make sure that we've covered everything that we need to cover. Nobody's against spending money on the property. Nobody thinks, we should look at different options, though. Why do we have to buy the entire lot? When you can buy a lot that's just developable, that can be developed, the one that can't be developed's never gonna be developed. So, you buy that part first. And then eventually, hopefully, the owner will say, "Well, you know what? I'm paying taxes on the property. Just give it to the town." Or reduce the price. Don't spend all the open space money that you don't have to. Then the other thing is, is that you do need to use your open space money for other projects around town. And those are the things that you have to look at. We all here care about the township. We all care about all our residents. But remember, it's a private road, so we have to think of, we need a plan of what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna be accessible to all the residents of West Orange, not just people that live in the area. That's the only fair thing to do. But doesn't mean I'm against it. I'm just saying is, we need to do, we need to have a plan of how we're gonna go about doing this property, how it's gonna be accessible, can people walk through it? What will we have to do to make it safely, able to safely walk through the property? We have to do our due diligence. And I believe we will. And I believe the council will make the right decision, will get the information, and will move forward. But nobody, one second, Councilman. Nobody here is not being transparent, and I resent that. I personally resent that. I resent it for my council colleagues, whether they accept it or not. But there's no, the due diligence needs to be done, because after the thing, if we don't do our due diligence, and something occurs, and we have to pay for it, people are gonna come back and say, "You didn't do your homework." So, I'd like to see the rest of the council what we're gonna do. It's important for open space, but I think we need to look at every piece and make options. And that's, and that's what we need to do. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you. First of all, Councilwoman McCartney is incorrect. I'm going to read everybody here an email that I sent when I was council president in 2017, on Thursday, September 7th, 2017, at 2:28 PM. Sent it to the council, to the mayor, to Mr. Sears, to Mr. Trank, and other people in the township. It was other people in the government. Its subject header is, "Open Space Resolution Recommending Town Council Consider Starting the Process for Acquiring Ridge Road Property. Mayor Parisi, Mr. Sears, Mr. Trank, and Mr. Kizer." Last September, this is a year later, last September, the Open Space Committee voted to recommend that the town council consider taking steps to acquire property on Ridge Road, starting with the required appraisals. "It appears that this is one of the town's largest undeveloped but developable properties, and thus appears to be a candidate for some funding from the Open Space Trust Fund. It's a beautiful area that I recommend you visiting if you have a chance. I respectfully request that the township's legal department prepare the appropriate resolution for the town council's consideration. I hope the proposed legislation can be ready for the September 19th council meeting, and certainly for the October 3rd council meeting. Please see the thread below and the attachment for additional information. Open Space Committee Chair Joe McCartney and I are happy to provide additional information if you need it." So, when I say I have been pushing and trying to get this moving forward, I probably haven't done as good a job as I, I could have, I'll certainly admit that. But I didn't sit here trying to take potshots at my colleagues. I'm simply trying to move this forward and ask everyone to, uh, follow the procedures, follow the process laid out by law. I'm sorry, Council President, uh, Garino, if I have offended you, but I, factually, if you want me to read the emails, I'll read them to you. I sent you an email on Friday.
I read them.
Okay. I sent you another email today, and you did not respond to either one of them.
I had nothing to respond back to you about. There was nothing to respond back. There's no-
I asked, I'll read it to you, but I asked as a courtesy to me if you would respond. And no, you didn't.
No, I didn't.
So, however you took that, I'm simply asking you to take the responsibilities of the council president and do what you're supposed to be doing.
And that's what, Councilman?
First of all, you should respond to every email that you get from any other council member. We are supposed to be at the governing body here, and even though we disagree, we still need to be communicating and trying to work together as much as we can. That's the answer. And you're the council president, one of your responsibilities, one of your duties is to add this-
Yes, I do.
-after it. And you didn't even bother responding to me.
I had nothing-
So, if you wanna take offense at that, fine. But I'm gonna continue to try to hold you accountable for what you should be doing as a council president.
I do. I don't have to, if I have nothing to answer you back, Councilman, I don't have to answer you back.
No, you're right, you don't have to.
No, I don't.
I'm asking, I asked you as a courtesy if you would respond.
There's nothing to answer you about.
You did not respond to me back. You did not respond to me back.
Okay, let's move on, fellas.
Let's move on, Councilman.
Here we go.
But again, I wanna, I wanna make it clear. I want to see if we're gonna vote just to authorize this to move forward, because that's what's stopping us.
Okay, so, let's ask this. Since I have this checklist about the county being responsible for Mount Pleasant Avenue, tree inventory, the appraisals that we have, the use of open space funds, the tax revenue implication, the, I already stated all the taxes of what it was assessed at, I wanted to know what the developable acres are up there? I need to know this. So, you're saying we're gonna move forward, and if we pass a resolution, all of these questions are gonna be answered? We were asking this informa, we want this information before we get the resolution to acquire this space. So, no, I'm not ready to move forward to a resolution until all of those questions are asked. That's what we're waiting for.
Councilwoman Matude Brown, you had your hand up.
Um, I, a couple of things. Um, I, again, being new on this town council, and the reason I ran is because, like many of the residents that are sitting here, I too was in those pews, asking for transparency, asking to understand what was happening behind closed doors. I am now on this side of the dais, and I am really surprised that you are offended that Councilman McCravieak mentioned that you did not respond to the email. Now, I didn't respond to the email, because in, with respect to the Open Public Meetings Act, replying all violates that, so I didn't. But I was waiting for your response, which didn't come, which I deserved. Because I am here charged by all of these votes, well, not everyone, but enough votes to have me elected. You have the responsibility to provide that information. And when Councilwoman Castellino sent out the email, I chose again not to add to that, because I did not wanna be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. But I think, and I have to say, no, it's not good. I, you have to respond. Even if, if your response is Councilwoman McCravieak or Councilwoman Castellino, I don't have anything to tell you. I am in the midst of getting that information. I did make a phone call, so I do have some information, but it is incumbent upon you as council president to do that. So, I don't see why there was an attitude. I don't think that Councilwoman McCravieak was being uncivil. I don't. Now, I, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman McCravieak said that in order to get the answers to all of the questions that Councilwoman McCartney just asked, is that we have to authorize the administration. Am I wrong? Is that what I missed, did I misunderstand that?
No.
Okay.
Because the resolution will say-
Well, there is no resolution, but I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what Councilman McCravieak was-
I'm a little concerned about all the emails between council members, 'cause that really is not a good idea.
I, I-
There, you can do it if it's one and one, but-
I understand, that's why I don't-
Beyond that, it gets dangerous. So, it troubles me a little bit that it sounds like there's more than I know about. But in any event, my, my recollection is, with respect to all land purchases that have been done since I've been doing this, which is since 1998, have been initiated not by the council, but by the administration, whoever the, whether it's Mayor McKean or Mayor Parisi. I'm, I'm not aware of any other, I may be not remembering, but I'm not aware of any land acquisition that was initiated by the council. The council can, I don't see any reason why the council can't initiate one and ask, and make a decision and say, "We'd like the resolution prepared to go forward with this." But I'm, I'm not aware of that being done in the past. I, you know, I, I hope all of you are familiar with the Open Space Committee, or Open Space and Recreation Committee ordinance, because what it contemplates, as I read it, it, it's strictly a recommending body, has no authority beyond that, doesn't control those funds. You do. You direct whether or not those funds are spent and how they're spent. And you alone. So, I just think, you know, that some thought needs to be put in here. I assume that you have questions. I'm not elected official. I have lots of questions, looking at all this stuff, but I can't ask them. I don't think it's my place to ask them. It's your place to ask them. You need to do your due diligence to determine whether or not you wanna go forward, how you wanna go forward, and so forth. And I would think, I mean, it, it speaks, the Open Space Committee doesn't just recommend to the council, it recommends to the mayor as well. Uh, I don't know what report it sent with respect to this. All I saw was Mr. McCartney's, Chairman McCartney's email expressing that they wanted you guys to, to vote on this. The ordinance contemplates that they do a whole lot more than that, that they find out how it's gonna be financed. What, what are they recommending vis-à-vis other open space in the town? They have, the Open Space Committee is supposed to prepare an inventory of open space in the town. I don't know what other open space there is at this point, and I'm sure there's not a whole lot of it. But all those things get factored in here, there's just a whole lot of questions that you folks should be asking. I mean, some of that land is steep slope, can't be developed. I'm, I'm not sure how much, what percentage of it, but it can never be developed. You can't clear-cut it. You can't do anything with it. I think there's two-acre zoning there now, which limits what you can build. Just lots of questions, and it's not for me to ask them, it's for you, so.
And I just did. So, that's what, that's not gonna come out in a resolution. So, okay. The question is, you're saying that if, Joe's saying that if we have a resolution, we're going to have all these answers, questions answered. We're not. The resolution is going to authorize us to either purchase or vote to not purchase it.
That, that's not what I understood. That's why I was asking for clarification. And if you will, again, Councilman McCravieak, can you please express or read?
I don't have the, I don't have the resolutions to demonstrate to you what we've done in the past. But I have always assumed that the law is in place to require the council, just as Mr. Kizer said, because the Open Space Committee is nothing but advisory.
Mm-hmm.
All right? They just advise. All right? They have, carry no weight, they don't spend the money. All they say is, "We think you guys should look at this. We're from the Open Space Committee, we know something about this, and we think you should consider it." But we can't do that until we get the authorization. Here's the other thing. If there isn't a requirement, this is what I always assumed, I have no idea what the law says, but I would assume that if you had this crazy Open Space Committee that wanted to recommend 12 different purchases at the same time, and just sent it along, then either it would drive the administration crazy, or it'd drive the council crazy, or it'd drive us both crazy, 'cause we'd be trying to do so much. So, this process that we have used, I've been on the Open Space Committee, I guess, eight or nine years, is we send an email, and we get the authorization, and then the council says, "Yes, let's move forward on it," and then the administration does its thing. That's what we've done before. That's what we've done with multiple acquisitions.
Never have.
Please stop interrupting me. Please stop interrupting me. If you wanna talk, please just raise your hand.
I did. Thank you.
But I can't show them to you tonight. But I will guarantee you, that's exactly what happened with Rock Spring. We had that last-minute blizzard of legislation, and one of the pieces of legislation that we approved was, we're going to authorize the administration to move forward.
Council President, that, that's correct, but it was initiated by the administration, not by the council.
And there was a presentation that explained everything, and why we were going, there were public meetings that explained that. I just read off a whole list of things. If we have a resolution, it's either going to be on consent, or we're going to pull it and discuss it. The resolution is not going to have all of these questions answered in a resolution. Council President? When the resolution comes forward, it's for us to decide if we're going to acquire or not. And until all of these questions are answered, I'm not going to put a resolution forward.
And frankly, if you want to discuss this issue, not the process, but whether you actually wanna buy this property, it's gotta be in a public meeting, like this. So, you got an opportunity tonight, next meeting, anytime you want, at a public meeting you can talk about it, debate it back and forth, ask questions. That's how it works.
Well, we could set that up. So, we could have the forester there doing tree inventory, we could have Lenny here talking about the developable acres, and people that could answer those questions could be here.
Yes, Councilman?
For the sake of moving forward with the rest of the agenda, I propose that we make a commitment to have a working session to discuss this, once we've approached the administration and have something to discuss outside of this, going back and forth and not understanding what we can do, what we can't do, what we will support, and what we won't support. I, I think overall, what I have heard here from my council colleagues is, yes, they are interested in supporting the acquisition, but would like more answers, and I think that that is prudent to do. I don't think that we have enough to be able to put together a resolution, and I know that the Sierra Club forwarded one, one I have not seen, but nevertheless, I think that we have to have a deeper conversation and come back and work together in public and have further discussion, so that we're not sitting here wasting your time and we can get on the agenda. But I think, I do want you to understand, from what I'm hearing from my council colleagues, that they are interested in having this discussion, and it's one we have to have. So if we can table this conversation, Council President, so we can move on with the agenda, I think that would be best.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay, so I'm not opposed to having a discussion about this. I also think it'd be prudent of us, I don't think, I hear you with the full working meeting. I don't, to slate another knife for all of us is always a little difficult, and I don't think the conversation needs to be that long. I know I've spent numerous hours discussing it with various members of the, asking questions with the administration. Basically, you know, number one, we need to know what is developable. I think we should forward questions to the administration of what we each have, and we could discuss this impending matters next week, next time we meet. I see no reason why we can't have a educated discussion if we forward all our questions. Bottom line is, is what is developable on the property? As I stated earlier, the property has the steep slope ordinance, it has bedrock, there's issues with entering into the property and exiting the property, it is on a private road, so, you know, how desirable it is versus the market price, just because a realtor has a number on it, again, I mean, that's what administration would need to make a recommendation to us, and that's what has been my experience since I've been on the council, that they make the recommendation to us, because again, they have all the numbers, Mr. Gross, you know, works the numbers for us, obviously what's been discussed tonight by the community with, in regards to numbers, there isn't the funding there, we could spend every dime of it on a purchase of the property, but from what I heard tonight, the money's not there. So can, do you want to buy a part of it now? Do you not want to buy a part of it now? Does the seller want to sell a part of it now, or the whole piece? So again, this is a discussion that we should send questions to the administration to see what information they do have. When it comes to a discussion of this nature, I don't know how much is it, do we do an executive session, because again, we could talk about purchasing, but as far as terms of what we prefer, is that negotiation?
Well, negotiation, contract negotiations would always be an executive session, but you're nowhere near that.
Exactly, yeah.
Whether you're going to buy or not, that's, that's an open session.
There you go.
That's a public policy issue, it's not a contract.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I would recommend we send whatever questions to the administration for answers, and we have a discussion at the executive, I'm sorry, pending matters, next council meeting.
I just, I'm going to just throw something out. I mean, one of the things that's contemplated by the open, not by the, by the Open Space and Recreation Committee is that they are, they are a body that can assist the council. You can ask them to get answers to these questions, if you want. That's a prime reason why they were created.
Mine are mostly with the, how do we purchase this? Again, now, Councilwoman Kukorvia, I don't want to point you out, but you usually don't vote, aren't supportive of initiating bonds, and I'm doing the math tonight, we're going to have to issue bonds to buy this property. So you're saying tonight, you're willing to issue bonds on the property? So again, these are, you know, the support could be there, but is it there? So I recommend, Council President, that we send questions to the administration, and next pending matters, if this is a pending matter, that we have a discussion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's what we've been saying all along. We need to do our due diligence, and we need to ask the administration and our professionals to pull the information again. We need to sit down, go through it, put it all together, and that's what I've been saying all night. Okay? Open space is important. We all proved it when we bought Rock Spring. And I spoke to a number of the people who are interested, and I answered all those emails back from the residents, telling them what we were thinking about. But I also said to them, months ago, they have to think about other options, buy part of it, buy the part that can be developed, and then the rest is rock and roll. Okay? But we also have to think about access to the property. That's all I'm asking, okay? Sir, I appreciate what you said tonight about your son getting up and looking out the window. Those are the most wonderful things I find myself. It's important. Those things you remember when you're living in New York City and you look out the window, so, and I'm not making fun, I appreciate what you're saying. Most of the people here who came tonight know how seriously I am about open space. I proved it many, many times. But we can't just run into something, because if we do something haphazardly, and we don't do it, and we don't do it properly, then the township and the taxpayers are out on the limb. I don't want to do that. I'd like to see this property preserved. It's a nice effect, it really is, but we have to really think it through. And my colleagues, I know all of my colleagues here sincerely feel the same way. And that's what I think we need to move forward is, is requesting that, requesting, yes, information. I do want to apologize to my township residents. I don't like to lose my temper, and I'm sorry, I very rarely do, but I take my integrity very important, all right? I didn't answer back an email, that doesn't mean I'm in collusion, doesn't mean I'm hiding anything, stuff like that. I didn't feel like answering it back, because I had nothing to answer back. But I take my integrity, what I've done for the township in the 40 years I'm here, I take it very, very seriously. And I'm not taking anything away from anybody else. My council colleagues, I suggest we move forward.
With the agenda.
With the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Review of the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, September 10th, 2019. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions. Before I ask if, Ernie, you're being polled, the administration is pulling off of the agenda 23219.
Which one, Councilwoman?
23219. Letter G.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukorvia, are you pulling or any questions?
I do have questions, Council President. On the joint resolutions, 229-19 and 230-19, some of the responses I got back indicated that the property on Central Avenue, where we're being asked to allocate funds or authorize the allocation of, reallocation of grant funds, was because of three of the four wells that are measuring, or was designed to measure contamination on the property, were either damaged or destroyed. And I'm trying to find out who it is that is the, who is responsible for the destruction of that property, because it seems to me that we should be getting them to fix these wells instead of allocating grant funds that could be better used elsewhere. So there were, one of the responses indicated that there were two consent orders having to do with the property down there. So I'd like to just start there with, with what the two consent orders from this, I guess it's the state DEP, what they have to do with. I got one of them tonight, but I don't know what the other one is. Maybe somebody could talk about that?
I don't think that we can give you the level of detail that you're, that you're looking for in reference to that. I would suggest that those specific questions, we'll do follow-ups with Matrix, with those specific questions. These two, I would urge, and I read those responses as well, which I had some of the same questions that you did, and we're going to follow up with that in terms of it. But moving forward, adopting these tonight allows us to move forward with the project. That notwithstanding, if we end up having someone who's responsible, that we can hold responsible for some of these costs, we will, we will indeed do that.
So we own the property at the time that these wells were damaged, correct?
I can't answer that. I did not do a timeline on it. So I, I believe that's the case, but I did not have enough time.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. So we have a brownfields fund. This has been a brownfield for, whatever, whatever the timeline is. These, and I appreciate Joe's question, because these, this was way before we enlisted Matrix. So those wells have been there for a long time, and if we have been using those funds, we have a $5 million brownfield grant, we draw from that grant. If we have been using those funds to have someone monitor them, and now they are saying they're damaged, one said it was seeped in sediment, then Joe's right, that we should go back to who has, whoever that was that was monitoring it before Matrix took over. But I understand the need to move forward, because here we have a project that has to get done. So I do understand that, but that is a legitimate question.
Those answers raised the same question for us as the others.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
I wanted to understand if I could, why the administration is pulling Resolution 232-19. It's a second change order on some 2018 street improvements.
Because we see the resolutions at the same time you saw it, and we saw that they needed it be in a different format, so we're going to be rewriting the resolution.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I just, I had a question also on the same resolution, 229. With regards to, just so that I understand, with regard to reallocation of the funds, it's just those same funds that are being reallocated, so we're not, okay?
And applying for additional funds to, so that at the end of the day, it's going to be all grant funds.
Okay.
Obviously, if we are able to generate additional funds through causation, find out the causation of it, we'll deal with that.
Okay. And you pulled, the administration pulled 23. I had a question on that, but that's pulled. I mean, yeah, they pulled it. I am going to pull Resolution 23119. I had, wanted to discuss that. And, yes, the senior bussin. So 231, I'm pulling. And I had a question on Resolution, oh, yeah, Resolution 235-91. It's on this tax appeal. What is Candyland Land? I just, I saw that there being, they were success, they successfully appealed their taxes and are getting reimbursed by 1990.
This is not an appeal. This is just a...
No, it's the reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah, because, oh, okay.
Oh, it's not an appeal.
Oh, but it said it here, successful tax appeal.
Successful tax appeal, means they went to the county board for judgment.
But Candyland, I was saying.
Yeah. No, I know, but it does say successful tax appeal, that's why I said that. I just, I was curious as to what Candyland Land was. Any idea? I know that's just a property, the name on property, but not like it's a...
I Googled it.
Me too. I was like, what is this? Is this like Disneyland or something? I didn't see anything on there. Okay, but that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino?
In regards to 231, I just had a question. Okay.
Did I have a question?
Well, she pulled it, so we can discuss it.
Is that it?
That's it, Council. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 23119, resolution authorizing an agreement with West Orange Senior Housing LLC to provide onsite transportation. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
So I had a couple of questions and, and actually a concern. Obviously, I supported this project. I think it would be a tremendous asset for our residents, our senior citizen residents, and residents as a whole, because of the public use benefit that we're going to derive from the project. I do however recall having a conversation, and we all were, had the benefit of meeting with the named developer with respect to the project itself. So if we look on the second page where it's agreement to provide onsite transportation, the bottom, the last whereas, the township of West Orange has the funding and capacity to add, my concern is twofold there. We, during our budget hearings, did not approve for additional part-time or full-time bus drivers, and at that time, we were told by the department, I'm sorry, I don't know her name, who came to give testimony?
Mrs. De Nova or...
Mrs. De Nova.
Transportation Director.
Yes, Transportation.
I mean, or Health Department Director.
Who clearly expressed to us that she was understaffed. So that whereas clause, to me, is concerning. Has the funding and capacity, clearly by her testimony during our budget hearing, they do not have the capacity. And then the second part of my concern is that when I met with the named developer, the conversation we had was that they, and correct me if I'm wrong, if that's not the process, but the applications that they made to, to the federal department with respect to having senior citizen housing, there is a component that they can apply for, for transportation. That's what I understood. We had a conversation about the benefit of them being able to apply for this funding for transportation and being able to take the seniors from, from the premises to wherever they needed to go. So I have a concern with us funding it.
This is no different than what we're doing today.
I understand that completely.
Absolutely no different than what we're doing. And the reason that we were doing this, if you read what the resolution said...
I did, absolutely.
It says, "The township operates a comprehensive transportation program," and it says that WOSH is applying to the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency for the development financing for the project, and must provide evidence of the ability of onsite transportation. So all they asked us to say was, if we're going to a senior building, can you pick the seniors up?
Okay.
And that's what we do now. We pick them up at five other buildings.
Got it. I completely understand that, and I read that they needed the evidence to prove that.
That's what this is about.
Okay, but then the whereas clause, it says that we have the capacity and funding. Is it, okay, so my question to you would be then, at that time?
It's already funded. All it is, is that our buses are now going to make another stop. It's already funded.
But are buses who are, who don't have the capacity of drivers as it is? So how are we...
Actually, the, actually, we have, we have the capacity for what we're doing right now.
Now?
And we, and to the extent that this is a lateral move to some extent in terms of picking up, it may or may not cause an extra expense, I'll come back to that in a sec. What we, what we did not, what you did not fund in last year's budget was for an expansion of our programs further, not to cover the current demand.
Because people wanted to go out of town, they wanted to go different places, and all we do is, we pick people up in town and we go to five different locations, and this is right next to Tengasden Street, so it's not a...
It's not a stretch.
No, not a stretch. And like I said, the bottom line here is, is like I said, if you read the resolution...
And I did, Mr. Sayles.
Where it says that basically, in order for them to get their onsite transportation agreement with the government, that they have to show that you're going to be able to pick up senior citizens from that building. And that's what they asked us. They said, they said, "Obviously, if it's a senior building, we're going to pick up senior citizens." That's exactly, that's all this resolution is about.
And as far as the whereas, the specific whereas clause that you have in the concern, I understand that concern. To the extent that there would be some, I'll say nominal increase in cost in order to perform these services, we are also going to be receiving in the future a pilot agreement from which we do not...
Which should cover that.
Right now, which would allow some movement, so you do have the ability to, in order to respond. That would be a choice that you'd make at that point in time. So you, there is, the statement is accurate. And then, obviously, any expansion in our program has to be approved by the council.
Yeah, I was just thinking back to that conversation that we had at the time, and, you know, if we were able to somehow, down the line, if this wasn't going to hold us to, you know, we're just going to provide it, and there's not going to be any renumeration for the expanded services, I had a concern.
Council could decide to take proceeds from the pilot agreement, or as, that relief and funding that comes with the pilot agreement, to provide this service and perhaps other additional services that we couldn't last year. So that's, again, that's something that you will face a couple of years from now when this becomes true.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So just to air clarity, so when Ms. De Nova appeared before us, she had asked for a full-time person. She has a part-time person and wanted to give that person full-time hours, because that person was available. She was having issues with finding additional part-time drivers, and, you know, again, we went through the school district and other venue, other, other contacts to try to get additional drivers, and she was having issues with that. I think she... issues with that. I think she resolved that issue in regards to finding more hours for some of our existing drivers, but still, the ideal situation for her, she could have had, you know, was to have that full-time person. Also, I think this enables, enables us, if we all keep our fingers crossed, our grant writer is working with Mr. Lepore and Ms. Van Dyke and Ms. Saunders in regards to another transportation option for our seniors. We're hoping to get additional funding, and I'll just leave it at that. So if that goes through, we'll be in decent shape. We have, because we share the program with our GNI program, you know, we're limited with the hours we could offer our seniors. So if we get an additional bus or additional driving hours through an additional grant, it will allow us just to have a bus and a driver during the times. But again, that's, you know, grants, we always, I don't like to mention, mention grants until we get them because you never know if you're going to get them. But-
Which worries me when they, when they go away.
Yeah, yes. And when they go away, that's also another issue. So it's something that we're, she's looking at, they're being diligent with, and, because we want to keep improving upon our senior transportation. But also having this other project, housing project that we're able to, you know, put on the new grant application is always a help, a helpful gold star, as I say, in order to get a grant awarded to us. Thank you, Council President.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 231-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2585-19, and ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section 46 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township Emergency Management. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2585-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open comment to my council colleagues. Anybody wishing to be heard on it?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank our SER team for all that they do for our community. It's an honor to be able to come out and support them this evening with this ordinance. You know, when it's unbearably hot out there, they're cooling off our residents in any kind of weather. They're, you know, they're, they're out there right next to our firefighters and our police service, our police officers. So thank you for all your time, and, you know, it's a volunteer. So what I would like, Ken, if you'd like to come up, just to let run, to let the public know on how they could sign up and become a volunteer and to join your organization if that's appropriate at this time.
I was going to suggest the same thing, Councilwoman. Ken and Kathy's here also.
Yeah.
Want to recruit new members? Now's the time to do it.
Yeah, give yourself a plug.
He had his chance. He had his chance.
I know, I know. Don't be shy about it. Don't be shy.
Yeah, so my name is Ken Steele. I'm the Director of West Orange SER. It's very difficult to become a member, actually. You call up Town Hall, or you go online to the West Orange Town homepage. There's an area there for SER, and on there is a, an application and a phone number. Just do it. It's that easy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we are really looking for people all the time. We have an organization that has, right now, I guess around 30 active members. We've been around for 34 years, I guess, that I've been around with SER and the other organizations prior to that. And as I said, we're a great organization, and we're always looking for new members. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Time requirement, how often do you meet?
Oh, yeah. It's once a month, two hours. And of course, when, you know, when there's an issue in town, that's when we do what we're trained to do. There are courses that we take constantly, first aid courses, emergency first aid, shelter management, and so forth and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Also, I was going to add, Ken, that you have fabulous barbecues as well for, and holiday parties if you join. Food is phenomenal. I also wanted to mention, with respect to the training that you were talking about, it's all done in-house, so you don't have to go out and seek your own certification. It's done with the Fire Department, the SER team, and the Police Department. And you will have moments that are, you know, we're home in cozy weather. You guys are out there for Armageddon, Snowmageddon, I'm sorry. That was tremendous. Thank you for the work that you do and for putting yourselves out there for our residents to remain safe. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Ken, I don't have to say much, Ken. We spend a lot of time together, but you're always very helpful with the street fair. You're always helpful with every event, and we couldn't do it without you. I know the Fire Department is always appreciative of the work that you and your volunteers do, and it's always great that we can count on you. So, thank you. And keep calling me anytime. It's all right. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2585-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
2586-19, and ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section 61.6 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board functions. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2586-19? This has to do with the inclusion of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board's input into the planning and zoning, which, when it comes to complete streets and safe streets. Are there any questions or any comments? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open the comments to my council colleagues. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2586-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
2587-19, and ordinance, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection 7-46.2, Parking prohibited during certain hours on certain days on certain streets, Servicing residential land uses except by permit of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2587-19? Anyone wishing, any questions?
Calvin Terrace people, if you want to be heard. Come up.
Please come up, ma'am.
Yeah.
You almost missed your chance.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, Calvin Terrace.
My name is Mary Ann Babula. I live at Four Calvin Terrace.
Please give you your name and address, please, ma'am.
Mary Ann Babula. I live at Four Calvin Terrace.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you, can you spell your last name?
B-A-B-U-L-A.
Thank you.
My question is as far as visitors. Sunday family dinners, maybe an overnight family member coming from out of state, would that be an issue, or would we just have to call, like, the Traffic Bureau to get permission to allow them to stay the night or during the day? Or do you get, like, a card to put in the window of their car saying that I'm visiting Four Calvin Terrace?
Miss Sarris?
Well-
Obviously, the best thing to do is call the Police Department, let them know that you have someone who's staying in your house.
Okay, and there's no problem with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Call the non-emergency number, not the Traffic Bureau. It's a separate, no, not the traffic. It's a separate number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, oh, yes, come up, please.
With the baby.
Good evening, sir. Can you just state your name and your address, please?
Christopher Viegas, 15 Parkside Avenue.
Can you spell your first and last name, please?
Christopher C-H-R-I-S.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I know how to spell it.
Viegas, V-I-E-G-A-S. I believe an email from me was forwarded to members here.
And your address? I'm sorry.
15 Parkside-
Thank you.
Avenue. My driveway is on Calvin Terrace, which is why I received this. On Parkside itself, there's only seven parking spaces available, about three days per week per side, so there's not much there. I would request that you consider allowing at least daytime without permit parking and have overnight parking as a permit. If it is an issue, as stated in my email, there, there is always a parking, about four or five parking spots available between Parkside to the dead end. So to me, there was not, no issue. Maybe people closer to the, the other intersection might be an issue for them, but there's always space on my end. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Anybody want to answer? A gentleman, the administration can answer the gentleman, please?
I'm not really sure what the question is, though.
Bottom line is, in fact, because people who live there were complaining that they couldn't park their cars there, so that's what we wanted to-
Can you speak into the microphone, Jack? I can't hear you.
No, I said that's why we did this, so that the people who live there can get parking permits and park on their own streets, because most of the people from across the street are pulling out those streets and parking there.
Yes, ma'am, Councilman?
Okay, so I live in the neighborhood and I have a few friends that live over by the folks that are here tonight. And one of them didn't even, you know, didn't get their notice or missed, missed their notice. But the way Calvin, I mean, Parkside is, it's very limited parking. I could see, I could see, and I know there is a situation with the overnight parking. My question, too, is there's folks that live on Eagle Rock Avenue, and if they were to have a barbecue during the day, you know, they're, they would utilize, you know, they live right on the corner, so did Eagle Rock Avenue get a notice as well? So that's, I just, just want to make sure that, I know people haven't responded-
I'm not sure the chief actually handled the notices. I'm not so sure who got them, but-
I know people haven't responded here, and they didn't come tonight, but they also may not know about it. So I do agree, there needs to be an issue with the overnight. And I also asked if we looked into Eagle Terrace, because I'm afraid that cars are going to go up to Eagle, and if we have to address that as well. So was there a thought to let them park there during the day and just have the permits at night?
No, because if you do it, if you do it half and half, it just doesn't, it doesn't work.
I know, but the parksides are really short.
From prior history, it doesn't work, because then you have people parking during the day who don't move their cars at nights, and then you have to go up there and either try and get them out of there, or the people who have the permits don't have a parking spot.
But Parkside is, you could fit two cars on Parkside. And so if you're having a company-
If this doesn't have anything to do with Parkside.
I know, but they park on Calvin.
I understand what you're saying.
Because when I go to my friend's barbecue, I park on Calvin. So I'm just saying, if somebody was to have a barbecue and they want their guests, you know, there's open spots, they're, like, now we're saying you can't park there unless you have a permit. So I'm saying, do you-
That's what it's, that's what having a permit is about.
I know, but, but you're, you're, the people, the, the three houses on Parkside are not going to have their guests park anywhere because they can't go on Calvin. That's the point. If you live on Eagle Rock-
They go out on another street other than Calvin Terrace.
Well, Valley Way, there isn't any parking. And what about the people on Eagle Rock Avenue that live adjacent to Calvin on the side, that are on the corner of Calvin, they would have the same problem, too, because there's, there isn't any parking on Eagle Rock Avenue. So I'm just saying, has the, like, I know the neighborhood hasn't had a community meeting to work all these issues out. I'm supportive of doing something because I know there's a definite issue at the end of the street with the cars from the apartments coming to park there. I just want to make sure that the community is well aware of it, because when I talked to a couple of friends, they had no clue what was going on. So I don't want people just to, we pass this, and then we're going to have issues after the fact.
Miss, come on, come on up, back up, miss. Thank you. And then Councilwoman Matute Brown, I'll go too.
Okay. And I know where you live is the main issue, right by you.
Right. That house on Eagle Rock Avenue did get the notices, and they are allowed to park. In that letter, it says, any house, that house on Eagle Rock Avenue is allowed to park on Calvin Terrace, because their property, their side yard and your driveway is on Eagle Rock Avenue.
It's parked.
So they were allowed. They got, it was on the-
So I think you should all refer to Parkside Terrace, I mean, yeah, Parkside. I think they should get a permit.
So, thank you for that information. I'm not very familiar with that area, but I can imagine the spillover traffic that would happen, right, on any given day.
The general public already had its, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, continue.
No, we didn't close it.
We didn't close it.
We didn't close it.
I didn't close it?
No.
And now everybody started asking questions. Okay.
I don't know.
Come on.
So should I, should I wait?
Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I grew up on Eagle Terrace, so I'm very familiar with this whole issue. I know that I did, I was here at the last council meeting, and I wondered if the people, because I totally understand what Councilwoman Castellino's saying, and the people on Parkside have no place to go. And also at Eagle, if you put the parking limitations on Calvin, the question is, will people just go to Eagle because they're right next door? And so I, I wondered if perhaps the people at Eagle were even notified of this, because, and Wilson Terrace is the other, on the other side, on the, the east, south side of Eagle Rock Avenue. And I just wondered whether those people were notified as well of this, because they do have, they would have a, an impact. They would have an issue. So I don't know whether those people were notified. I know, I know people who live on Eagle Terrace. I don't see anybody here, so I just wondered.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Well, they're just going to make us a round robin. They didn't say anything until I called.
Okay.
It's okay.
Margaret Cunningham, Two Calvin Terrace.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Cunningham, C-U-
Oh, Cunningham, thank you.
As far as I know, Eagle Terrace and Wilson already have permit parking, so I don't think it's an issue.
Good to know.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, who else, please? Anyone else in the general public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I open it to my council colleagues. Any of my council colleagues have comments?
I was going to make a comment, but understanding that Eagle Terrace and Calvin also have permits, was in a mood to table this, but I don't think at this point that that would be effective.
I'm sorry?
Did you close?
I closed public comment.
No, she was already up.
I closed public comment.
And she closed it.
I mean, so, I mean, you're answering a question, Councilor Self.
No. I was going to make a statement prior to Ms. Cunningham coming up to the mic, but she advised that Eagle Terrace and Calvin also already have permits, parking permits, so, but my comment is no.
Well, it's important.
No, it's not.
Okay, but now I do have a question. So if Mr. Vegas, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name, but does that leave you with no parking?
Yep.
So what happens to?
He has no parking.
He has no parking. Right. So, I mean, is it the whole street, or can there be parking for? Because in his situation, his driveway is on Calvin, but his house is on Parkside.
Can I make a recommendation to my colleagues? Our, can we, I know, I know we're on second reading, we can't amend this. Can we amend it next time, put on, add Parkside Terrace to this?
It's the second reading. The way, if you want to vote it down, you can vote it down. The way, if you want to vote it down, you can vote it down. You could re, you could just have another solution. My sense is, from the conversations, that there's really no good solution here, and it's, you know...
No, not necessarily, because if the permits are already, if they, there's permit parking on Wilson and Eagle, really, the only, again, I know the area because I live there in the neighborhood, the Parkside should have been included in this, because it's...
You have a question?
I know it wasn't, and, so how do we add it?
You have to vote this down.
Okay.
And start all, right. Or approve it and then...
Amended?
And add with something later that says Parkside's going to be, going to be...
So we could, we could amend it and add Parkside.
This is...
No, 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 no.
No, not tonight.
After the fact, not tonight. We could vote it.
And have to do a separate ordinance for Parkside.
Yes. Okay.
That's what you're going to have. If you want to do it, that's up to you. All I can tell you is, the reason we did this is because Franklin Calvin Terrace, Beverly Hills...
I understand. I understand that.
We understand.
But they're on that side of the street, the people on the other side of Calvin on Parkside have that issue because they're not going to have a place for people to park.
So I, I'm going to agree. I don't want to table it because I want to move forward for the sake of people on Calvin Terrace, but we can issue another ordinance for Parkside as well.
Yeah.
Okay. I would agree.
Yeah.
So what are we going to do?
We are going to vote on this.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2587-19?
Some move.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toob Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are no ordinances on first reading. Matters pending, any new business, any new matters? Yes, Councilwoman?
So the new matter would be, Mr. Sayers, can we, can you get it in works to add Parkside, to do an ordinance for Parkside Terrace?
The engineering department goes out, researches it.
Yeah.
And put something together back. We don't like to do it unless all the people in the town are on the street.
Well, you have one of the three here tonight, and I could get you the other two.
You've got to make sure everybody on the street.
There aren't that many houses to set up.
And, yes, Councilwoman?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. So, so wait, so here's the thing, so, no, I guess what I was trying to ask is for the people on Parkside to get the permit so they could park on Calvin. How would we make that happen?
They could get the permit to park on Parkside, not to park on Calvin.
Okay, so then I should have voted no.
Why wouldn't you want to get a permit to park on their own street if nobody else is parked except that?
No, you misunderstood me. I wanted the people on Parkside to have the ability to be able to park on Calvin, too, like the people on Eagle Rock Avenue could park on Calvin.
I don't think you could have it both ways.
What you would do is you would propose for people on Parkside to get permits to park on their own street. That's how it works.
Yes, Councilwoman McCartney?
She's ears are still going.
I'm just going to, I'm going to speak with the engineer, like, let's see if we can resolve, resolve this. Maybe we'll have to amend the ordinance we just passed. I don't know.
Try to figure it out.
Well, you can introduce a new one.
Could do a survey. I was just going to say, in pending matters, that I would like us to consider an ordinance on vaping.
Oh, yes, yes.
Right, that was one. And we're still getting complaints on bamboo, so there is this, there is an ordinance circulating about controlling and maintaining bamboo because it's so invasive, so that is going around circulating, but I've spoken to the forester and the zoning officer on it to make amendments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Oh, can I add to, to Councilwoman? I have something else to add to Councilwoman's request.
Go ahead.
So I had sent, I'm not sure if Mr. Kaser, if you got a copy of it, I'd sent to Legal and Mr. Sayers to you, an ordinance about vaping, Rose Lampassan ordinance in regards to vaping, and I didn't get a response back from Legal or yourself in regards to that ordinance, so I was wondering if there's anything we do. At the very least, if we could ban the sale, the sale of the flavored cartridges. That seemed to be what's killing our children these days.
I can't give you an answer right now, but I didn't get that email, so, and, and Mr. Sayers said he sent me an email earlier today, it got kicked back, so I don't know what's going on, but I'm getting emails from, you know, other people, but I, apparently I'm not getting all my emails, and I have no idea why. So my guess would be, since Mr. Sayers said it kicked back, that it's a problem here, or the interaction between here and my email, but I really, so, but I didn't get one from you today.
Okay.
So if you can resend, and if you don't get a reply from me that you, that I got it, then we've got to figure out what the problem is.
Okay, I'll resend it to you so you can review to see if it's possible.
Please resend it, because...
Okay. Okay. And, and just to update you, going back to the beginning, even when I mentioned I had the Board of Liaison, Liaison meeting, one of the items that we were discussing with the, you know, with the school boards been working on is awareness for the vaping for the students, because it's such an issue, so...
We had an excellent speaker, if you recall, when we were doing the, raising the age to 21 for the cigarettes, too. There was an excellent speaker here.